Alright folks, before we get started, I just want to ask that if you're gonna speak tonight, if you could come to this podium and speak into that microphone, that's for the sake of Lake Cam, which is recording the meeting. So this is the January 29, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Lakeville. Is anybody recording the meeting? Other than Lake Cam? Okay, thanks. Our first order of business tonight is to meet with our Building Commissioner Nate Darling to discuss the FY19 Competitive Green Communities Grant Round. Nate, thanks for coming.
Thank you. So as you all know, Lakeville being a green community, we're eligible to up to $250,000 annually for energy improvement grants. We've done it 2013, 2015, and now just completing a 2017 grant round. We're on track to be eligible for the 2019 grant cycle. We've done thermal audits on the Ponecourt High School identified, close to $2 million worth of projects. I'm looking for the support from the Selectmen tonight to go forward, and even though it's a district, to allocate that $250,000 worth of grant money from DOD for Ponecourt High School. Don't we have any questions?
Yeah, no, I guess at the last Regional FinCom meeting that we talked about with the schools, one of the things that we had discussed really was the fact that we've been pouring all this money back into Asalwamset, and I'd asked them, you know, if they had talked to you about becoming, or at least looking into the Green Communities Grant to see what they could do with regard to their capital improvement plan, which I don't know if they shared that with you or not? No.
A little bit. I mean, we were working closely together to get the Owner Assistant Technical Grant, which was a grant for $12,500 to do these thermal audit products, so I worked with Bob on that.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, I think, you know, I brought that up at the meeting, just that they should get in touch with you, just so that we can get the ball rolling on anything that we could do at the regional district. So I'm completely fine that we've, you've done a great job with everything you've been doing, and I know it's a lot of work. And so, thank you for everything you're doing and just trying to keep this moving forward.
I think we both, when I say both, Nate and I both, we've all looked at the Regional School Finance Committee meeting notes, and they have a lot of electrical needs, panel needs, that they talked about fire boxes, and they talked about boilers, they talked about things that they've done regarding lighting. We need to have them step back. All of that is covered under grants. And even though they've made an effort to change things, it's free money from the state. And we really need to encourage that, either through the Regional School Finance Committee and say, "Listen, certainly give us a list of what you've identified, but obviously there's a thermal audit that would, if you will, take precedent over them." So it's good that they make an effort to improve things within the school, but the grants will pay for it, and they should take that opportunity to do that. They've not done that. They've indicated, "Yeah, we need to do that," and they really do.
I think one of the things too, at that meeting, is that we discussed Freetown, and they haven't adopted the stretch code, so they're not eligible, but they seem to be working, they think they're working towards it, I'm not sure where they're going with it, but it's kind of a shame because we could have more.
They could update you on that. That would just be an additional 250, but the 250 that the Town of Lakeville can, comes under, if you will, our purview, and the purview of the grant, that's almost a given with the low-hanging fruit in just Ponecourt High.
So will that, will that come through the Town of Lakeville?
Yeah.
So we, so that's actually a really good conversation piece for the next meeting, because if the money actually is granted to the Town of Lakeville for energy improvements at a building that's in Lakeville that happens to be a regional school building, to talk about an allocation or a special allocation on that, if that's something that can be handled. I mean, I think that's a, it's worth the conversation, because I know it's not, it's not our money, but...
It's worth the conversation, but they, they need to step up and manage the numbers. That is, the reporting of it, collecting of the numbers, the savings, the things that Jim Kenny does, they need to take that under their role of regional school. So Nate would apply for the grants, but all of the report writing really comes under the purview of the school. So we need to get them to do that.
How much of this are they aware of? I mean, are they aware of that responsibility?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I've, I've talked to all of them about it. This first $250,000, we'll not need any money to help subsidize the projects, it's all based on return on investment. So to John's point, some of the low-hanging fruit, it's five to seven-year return on investment. Once we get up into the 15 to 20-year category, like we did with our last grant cycle, if you dedicate some money and put it towards it, or allocate money towards it, you can drive down our return on investment and make, you know, the projects more competitive in nature. So this year shouldn't be an issue. Next year, we'll probably have to get funds to put towards it to drive down that return on investment.
And Freetown could be doing the same thing at their, their elementary school, if they so chose to, well, they could spend, they could get a 250 grant, we could work on the middle school, the grade school. It never ends.
Yeah, certified as a green community. The issue's gonna be, when you look at the regional agreement and funding agreement, that's what I was asking, so the check would be payable to the Town of Lakeville, right?
Yeah.
And then from there, it would be contributed in through the assessment sheet, which would mean it would either look like a special, a special assessment, which would require a unanimous vote of the school committee to take money in a disproportionate method that wasn't in accordance with the regional agreement, or it becomes part of the contribution of the Town of Lakeville. That's, that's kind of the piece that we're gonna have to sit down with them and talk about, if and when this comes through.
So it seems to me that the money's paid directly to the contractor, and we hire the contractor to do the work, is like a general contractor. So I'm not sure if we're, we're not gonna be paying funds to the regional school district. I mean, there'll be money spent towards it.
Well, that's actually easier, because it's less political.
It's a conduit, yeah, exactly. So we just need to make sure that that's all squared away and everybody understands that that's how it will be flowing into the district.
But I would think also that we wanna, when you do this, we wanna notify the school committee, so they're aware of it for the sake of, again, they don't necessarily need to accept the funds, but they do need to accept...
The work.
This happening, right?
Well, it also would have to go through the assessment sheet, with a funding source that would be coming from that money, as opposed, so it would have to be transparent, I think, to get everything, you know, through, and it would have to be voted on in the budget level.
Right, right. I mean, technically, right, technically it comes to us, but technically, more technically, it's even state money.
Isn't government great?
That's a good time. Should we get on the next, I mean, should I get on the next school committee meeting and make sure that...
Yeah, I think if you wanna either try, well, so the next Regional School Committee meeting is Tuesday, February 5th. It's at night, I won't be around, so I can't attend that meeting anyways. It's the day, it's right after their budget presentation, which is happening on, I think it's next Wednesday, if not tomorrow night, might be tomorrow night.
It's next Wednesday.
It's next Wednesday, okay. So that's when they're gonna have their budget presentation? Would this be coming in for, or we don't know?
Yeah, so the grant actually has to be written by, it's the first week of March, and then the grants are awarded by June, so, you know, I, it's a lot of work, but I can think I can get that grant. I just hate to lose the $250,000, so...
I would meet with the school committee first.
Should we just have Nate meet with...
School committee.
Or maybe just with Rick?
Well, right, we, right, you need to do it in a school committee in a public forum. We've met for five years. When did Rick start? Four or five?
Five.
Five years ago, a month, when he came in, we met with him at the Green Energy Committee, with Seth Pickering, with everyone. And five years later, we've not moved forward at all.
Yeah.
So it should be done in a public forum, at the school committee, and talk about the $250,000 grants that I think we can do for the rest of our lifetime, because we have four other schools.
Right, but I think, I mean, to say that's almost a misnomer, because we'd need to have, I mean, we were using the money for Asalwamset, so for the first three years of the grant cycle, essentially, we've been using that money, pouring it back into Asalwamset. So I think, just to have that conversation with them, either they can come to a meeting that we have, whatever is more convenient, because they're gonna have their budget meetings, and I don't know if they're gonna have...
I'd love them to come to a meeting, but I don't wanna miss filing the grant.
No, no, absolutely, yeah.
I don't wanna...
My point is that you should meet, the meeting should happen before you do all the work.
Yeah. I mean, ideally, I mean, they, they're well aware of this, because they, they applied for the Oda Grant, the Owner Assistant Technical Grant.
Right.
And they knew that that was the precursor, the thermal audit was the precursor to applying to the Green Communities Competitive Grant. Rick was involved with those conversations.
But they're not doing it.
No.
So my point is that if you're gonna do it on their behalf, they should vote for that, they should vote to accept that.
The key is to access to the schools.
Especially if there's gonna be an allocation issue.
Yeah, so why don't we send a letter to the school committee, and then, that way, it's from the Board of Selectmen stating that, you know, this is pretty much the outline, we're, you know, we're interested in applying on your behalf for, you know, the Green Communities Grant for the high school, you know, we'd like to get on an agenda as soon as possible, you know, kind of get a little outline as to what the grant entails, the deadlines on it, and why we need to get in front of them, and the savings that, you know, we're proposing to be able to, to work on behalf of the schools. And that way, Nate will discuss it at a school committee meeting, hopefully, you know, they let us know when that is, and they'll invite us to it, but that way, at least, they know that we're kind of moving forward with it, and I think, and you could have a call with Rick in the interim and say, you know, the letter's here, we're talking about it, and
we're looking to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
Perfect. Alright, do we wanna vote then?
Some would.
Alright, second, any further discussion? Are none of those in favor? Is there any other piece of that meeting that you went to that Nate should be aware of? Briefly?
No, I mean, I think that, you know, a lot, well, I mean, things like, we were talking about capital repairs and capital projects, and I think that as we kind of go through our capital meeting and budget items for the town, that that's probably a good time to talk about, I mean, of course, they're talking about the repaving, and what we're doing with the funds that we have already set aside for Asalwamset, but I don't think that's anything that, you know, again, maybe that would be a component of when we do get a chance to get in front of them, that we can talk about some of their capital needs. But I'd like for you to see their capital plan as well, so maybe we can get them to send us the capital plan that can get sent to everybody, just so that we can start talking about that.
So I did speak with John about that, I watched the meeting, and they had a laundry list of capital projects, and, you know, not to insert myself into that process, but offer my assistance, you know, to evaluate them, you know, for the schools, I'd like to have the opportunity to take a look at them.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big thing is, they can't do it without our support, they have no funding source. So it's either us alongside Freetown to be able to say, "Yes, we're willing to fund this," or else they don't have an opportunity to fund that in the first place, so it would be good to work together.
One other thing that was discussed while Nate is still here, is the Asalwamset grant, we'll call it for that $12 million thing, that...
Oh, the NSBA, yeah.
That somewhat didn't, didn't get advanced at the Regional Finance Committee, however, the school committee voted to apply again, and we really wanted them not to, I wanted them not to do that, I want them to try to get grants that don't qualify under energy grants for like the windows, there's no payback, so we can't get an energy grant, so they reversed what was said at the Regional...
Yeah, I was gonna say, did they, they...
They voted, they voted to advance it, so they're gonna be coming to you once again for the third time to do AES, and we don't wanna do that.
Well, no, they need to come to us, and we have to, they'll come to us and have that conversation.
I know that. They reversed what was discussed at the Regional Finance Committee.
They still need our support in order to move it.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
I know that, but we want them, I would suggest that they do grants for the windows, which we can't, we don't qualify for, there's no payback.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm surprised that they reversed that, I haven't seen that yet.
Alright, thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks, Nate.
Alright, Agenda Number Two is to meet with the Monroe Brothers to discuss their proposal for recreational marijuana dispensary at 10, 310 10th Walt Drive. So we did receive a bunch of information in preparation for the meeting, and welcome.
Thank you. Brian Monroe, Monroe Associates, and we're here to review the requested business plan for the proposed dispensary at 10th Walt Drive.
Yeah, well, let me ask, does, anybody have any questions specific to the business plan or the information provided?
Only the timing of the funds, and I understand that, 2019, it talks about a financial, a low financial projection from what we had from Nature's Remedy, and I understand the delays of the planting and things like that. So that was the only thing that somewhat caught my eye.
The 2019 numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
I know you, it's beyond your control, somewhat.
Yeah, we just went with like a one-month sale.
Right.
Sales or something like that, just to...
Right, that was the only thing that...
Because we know it's gonna obviously be, you know, delayed right through, most likely fourth quarter of this year.
Right, we're hoping it's better than that, yeah.
Yes.
I didn't want the taxpayers to be counting on it.
You know, all the money could be making.
Yeah.
So just to summarize my understanding of this, you need to enter into a host community agreement with the town for purposes of doing migrational sales. So do you have questions of any of the information provided, or any questions of the applicant?
No, I mean, I think, you know, at the last conversation that we had, you know, we have to decide as a board what we're going to do for kind of upfront licensing fees, what we're gonna do in the host community agreements, because as we previously said, originally, we were just looking at two vertically integrated medical and adult use facilities, which had a $50,000 upfront payment, we had the $10,000 charitable contribution that was included in the host community agreement, and the $15 per pound of cultivation, we have the 3% on the retail sales. So now we have all of those other, kind of, not all, but we're starting to see other license types coming in, individual license types that are coming in in front of us. So it's something that we need to discuss as a board in terms of what the HCA will look like. I did see that you put in 3.1%, that was kind of funny, in the math, you know, when we're looking at the host community taxes, at least coming through.
Of course, it's a typo.
It's a math error.
We're rounding up.
Oh, we included the charitable in there, too.
We feel we went fairly conservative numbers as well, so...
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, and I think that that's something that we need to, we need to discuss, because certainly we have, you know, we wanna be, I think, fair to all of our applicants that are coming in front of us, and we wanna make sure that it makes sense for everybody. I hate to, you know, penalize those who came first, but I think that we need to have that conversation, and we haven't had an opportunity to really have that, I know, we talked about it. This was really kind of the first piece, and now we're looking at, now let's talk about what the HCA might look like, too. So I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on this?
I somewhat like to take the simple agreement that we had with Nature's Remedy and just change the names, if you will. That's somewhere where I'm heading, is that the direction that we would give Amy is, is simply change the names, and that adds the consistency to what I think we'll be talking to other people about, too.
Yeah, I mean...
That's where I am, I'm for the $50,000 again, and certainly, we had that discussion, Amy certainly made it, made an effort, Attorney Cuswell said retail is the most profitable side of the business and has the most impact, but forget it, forgetting that, I'm just for cloning the agreement. We have, we have the template that everyone worked very hard at, and I'm just for putting names in.
Yeah, I mean, the template was designed as a full vertical integration, so I, you know, I'm curious, Aaron, if you have any, you know, I know where John stands on it, too, and just from a business perspective, and what we wanna, how we wanna treat our business partners in town.
Right, and I, I think that, I'm open to the idea of having different amounts for differing, or different business types, but I guess the question is, how and when do we, we do that? So I think there's two pieces to this, one, we really wanna get the HCA going, which we can, we can have Amy get on it and start that process, with the idea that if we're going to kind of have a matrix, if you will, or, you know, a business X pays Y right down the line, I mean, I'm open to ideas, I'm open to having that conversation, I just, I guess the question is when? Do, you know, I mean, do you wanna propose something?
Yeah, I mean, I think that ideally, in order to be what I would say is fair and equitable to all of our applicants, is if the maximum would be $50,000 upfront, but it's based upon license types, and it's a tiered system in terms of what types of license types amount to that $50,000, if that's kind of where we went with it, or it amounts to, you know, potentially some sort of, I don't know if I wanna say renewal credit or credit against some of the other payments for those who have already put it forward. I think that that's the way to handle it from a fair and equitable perspective, but I would like to know what some of the other applicants, and I do see, you know, some here that are our first applicants, really have to say about that, in terms of, you know, you've kind of come to Lakeville from the beginning, and, you know, you were working with us, and we were working with you, and I'm just kind of curious from that perspective. And that's more from the business perspective than necessarily the town perspective, so I kind of would like to have that conversation.
I can, I can see the various amounts if one was doing a testing lab and that type of things, if someone came before us for that, but these, in my mind, are the most substantial parts of the business, that, that obviously, the grow facility, the retail, and the medical facilities. I don't really separate those necessarily. You could, and say, "Well, is there a different rate just for cultivation?" And we'll have that when you have thoughtful funds in front of you.
Right, so... Yeah, but I think that's his point, is it makes sense to, to develop that now, so that we have that expectation, and the applicants have that expectation.
Exactly.
And it's easier for them to plan and understand.
Right, and everybody's on the same playing field.
And certainly, when we have the other applicants in front of us tonight, certainly, the question would be, is what do you see, does people that are in the existing business, what do their host community agreements look like? We should look at what's been done in other towns, but for this, if a timely host community agreement is, is necessary to get them to do filings, then we should work to that deadline.
Well, I think that we can have this, I would think we can have this conversation right now, and all that would entail is one change on the HCA that we already have squared away and templated. I don't find that to be, I don't think this is a long drawn out process, I think we can, we can get, we have our, our existing, you know, HCA...
And the change of the templates to what for the Monroe brothers?
Nothing until we have this conversation.
Well, I think that one change would be bad.
It's just that...
Well, let me ask this, have you seen the HCA with them?
Oh, no, with Brian.
Okay, so you're familiar with that. Are there other aspects of that that you would have questions or concerns with?
Not me, no.
Okay, alright, so it's safe to say then that the only variable is, is what you're describing, is that, is that payment. It's either going to remain as it is, or be less if we decide that we wanna tier it down for the sake of retail sales versus fully integrated, fully integrated business at all.
So whenever you wanna have that conversation, we either have, maybe we have that conversation right in SAP.
I think we continue to have it tonight as we go through...
We listen to the other applicants.
And we don't, maybe we don't necessarily have a final version, but I think if we have the framework set up, we can, we can move that forward, but in the meantime, it won't hold up what you guys are trying to do.
Right.
We can get that going. File it, and we'll vote on that.
Yes, two numbers. Because also, I'd say charitable, so I, just to be consistent, those are the two items that are, I would say, negotiable and variable. We have the 3%, we have the $15 per pound of cultivation. I don't think those are, you know, on the floor for discussion, per se, it's really those other two.
Twenty-five pounds.
Sorry, twenty-five.
We'd love to go back.
I didn't correct you the first time, but now, now, yes, twenty-five.
You got that on record, yeah.
John actually corrected, but no.
You could just strike out all the types of licenses that are in there. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear from, you know, Brian from Nature's Remedy, just with regard to...
What you're gonna ask, I guess what I'm, in summary, what I think I heard you say is that you, we were to pay $50,000, and it was first for the cultivation, and when we went for the dispensary, it was lumped together, right? I think...
No, we had one HCA for the entire vertical integration.
Right, but originally, we just, we started with medical, then we added recreation, but the point was that we were to pay one $50,000 fee per company. And I think if we went back on the notes, or the meetings, the tapes, it was, because up the street, Jeff, who was gonna do just medical, was gonna pay also $50,000. Originally, it was just going to be the grow there, I think he's now coming back for a dispensary, so I think the original conversation that took place was that anybody who came to town, one company paid $50,000, so whatever you bolted on to that company, you paid $50,000. So whether you just had a grow, you paid $50,000, if you just came for a dispensary, you paid 50. I think that's where you originally started from, and that's what our understanding was. So I guess for us, if somebody, and I don't mean to talk against the Monroes here, because obviously, they're going into our site, but from our point of view, if somebody that just opens a dispensary and has to pay less, do they have a competitive advantage to us?
Right.
And I think that's the, the important thing, is that everybody's consistent, since Alex has already paid the $50,000, I'm paying the $50,000 now without a dispensary.
Right.
It just seems to me that originally, was it, one company shows up, they pay $50,000, you get your license, and, I mean, Alex and I argued vociferously that $50,000 was a lot of money. Originally, it was $50,000 every year when we first started talking to you, and, thank you, John, backing off on that, but, but the point is, it was one $50,000, and you come to town, whether you're one company, you're with five things, or one thing, it was a $50,000 payment, so...
So, right, I don't wanna change that, and what happens in this, because it's somewhat of a special deal where John Brady and Bob Carr aren't doing it, but an investor is, but it's a different LLC, so you could say, "Well, they've already paid it, and they already know the people," but I think that will get so convoluted, that this is a, this is a different company, because what happens when the Monroes decide to sell? What happens when John and Bob decide to sell?
Right.
I think when there's a change of an LLC, it kicks in a new host community agreement, and I think it treads on dangerous ground, and we say, "Well, those guys already did the 50, and these guys are really close to them, same building, let's waive it." I think it's a different LLC, or I think we tread on dangerous ground.
Right, because the only other alternative to that would be to tier it and give credit for what was already paid, but if I'm, and that's why I wanna hear, you know, you came in here with the understanding of 50, and I'd like to hear from Alex with the same.
Yeah, just one, one thought before you start, I think it really, to a certain extent, it comes down to the idea that that was the cost of doing business in Lakeville, right? And does that disincentivize smaller business types? And that was really your concern, was...
Exactly.
If you're gonna, you know, you're gonna do some mom and pop operation that isn't gonna necessarily justify the $50,000, you don't locate in Lakeville, but that may be okay. I mean, I think that's kind of a policy decision that we need to make as a board.
Right, because the alternative would be then, there would be a tiering system for which you'd get credit.
Sure, sure.
No, absolutely, if you wanna just step up, you can, yeah.
So the reality is, we should all be paying the $50,000 if one of us says we should all be paying it. That's, that's how it should go. Whether I agree that's fair or not is irrelevant.
Right.
What you could do, and I think the CCC would really appreciate it, and I think it's the right thing to do, is that if you are an economic empowerment equity applicant, then the $50,000 should be waived in the community of Lakeville, to justify and give the opportunity to those that are less fortunate to pursue this industry. That's what I would do if I were in your shoes.
I do wanna...
I don't necessarily think that's good policy.
I do wanna disincentivize those mom and pop shops from coming to town. I am not interested in having small businesses in the million dollar, I've, I've said that I would like to only entertain those people that are equal to or greater than the three potties that are before us.
Okay.
And I don't want... And I don't want vape shops to be doing a million dollars worth of business yet. Whether that's five years from now, I may change my mind. But I certainly want to digest these three folks' business.
If that's the opinion by all means.
It's not everyone, we have different opinions.
But I would say that at the end of the day, if one entity pays a certain amount, another entity should pay that amount. Because otherwise, you are, you know, getting involved in business.
Well, that's the thing, is we certainly can do that for the sake of a policy to, it really incentivizes certain business styles. And I think that that's really what this conversation is, is that if you want to tier it, then it may give smaller businesses an opportunity. John doesn't necessarily like that. I haven't really thought about it all that much, but I think I'm trying to just understand what.
Yeah, just another idea to consider.
Because what we would do then is with those of you who have paid the $50,000, we would scale or tier back to other, other amounts that would then add to the $50,000 from the three.
I just recently received approval in the city of Worcester for a retail location. They have in their host community agreement that there is a payment upfront, but it's applicable towards the 3%. And so what they're trying to do is.
Offset the.
Get someone to commit, if you're going to commit to doing your business here, get them to commit. That may be something to consider as well. But at the end of the day, the only thing I have to say is, if one of us should pay it, we should all pay it. The reality is, we can all pay it.
True, thank you. Okay. Do we want to vote on this one item before we move forward? And then we can have this conversation with other folks as well?
To vote on?
On entering into an HCA with Monroe Brothers, subject to negotiation with Town Council.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I agree.
Okay, go ahead, move down motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
I do have a question, John, for you about what justifies a small mom and pop operator versus someone who is not.
Okay, so that we have what I consider to be three substantial people.
You guys are all set.
Three substantial people that we've been dealing with. And we have two other groups before us tonight. We also have other groups that have gone to zoning boards and things like that and said, Jesus, you know, I want to get in this business, I have a business plan of a million dollars. I'm not interested in that. At this point in time, I'm talking gross sale value. I would not try to dissuade a test house from coming to town. And I would say, what are those other host community agreements for test houses? But we have, I believe we have an obligation to our citizens. And we're trying to digest the three people that are in front of us, plus two new applicants, and there'll be two more beyond those. Because I already know one's already gone to zoning board who's not here tonight. So I don't want small mom and pop in the beginning. But that's just me.
On gross projected sales.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to.
I mean, I get the point that someone may want to do edibles and be boutique and create a name for themselves, and that may be a smaller business. But I'd rather that we deal with the larger clients to start with. And then look at it later.
Just a hypothetical?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Let's look at Free Town, for example. There's a million square feet that they are planning to build. The premise is, it's a big operator, so that small mom and pops can all piece off a little bit of themselves into it.
Exactly.
Now, is that a big operation, or are those many small operations?
Yeah, we're not in Free Town.
Yeah, I mean, we're not in Free Town.
I guess they're not in front of us, but obviously, obviously, you know the concept of the million square feet, ten potential growers at 100,000, they started out with 125,000 square foot building. So it jumps around, but yes, if someone wanted to build a new million square foot building, I'd be wanting to talk to them. And maybe that's the cultivation part of it. If they cultivate it, I don't know where they do the retail sales.
Cultivation is square feet equals four dollars.
Yep, yep, yep. Right, and I envision a lot of people coming to us to say, wow, I want to buy Stars Market. I want, I want to be a vape shop. I want to sell the paraphernalia. And I believe my business plan is a million dollars. I don't want to wrap my head around that in the beginning.
All right, so we're going to move on to a dinner number three. This is to meet with Twisted Growers LLC to discuss their proposal for a recreational marijuana cultivation facility at 415 Millennium Circle. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. So we received some information, we received a cover letter from attorney Salisbury.
Big first.
Thank you. Some financial information for two of the applicants and a business plan for Twisted Growers. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Salisbury, our attorney. I'm here on behalf of Twisted Growers LLC. Along with me are the managers of Twisted Growers LLC, Mr. Dominic DiMartino and Dennis Carjanis. We're here to discuss a proposed cultivation facility which would entail the renovation of an existing 24,000 square foot warehouse facility currently owned by Mr. DiMartino into a 15,000 canopy square foot cultivation center. So whatever your pleasure is, we can handle the presentation. If you have questions, if you want us to go over the facility, the existing facility, the plans.
Let me ask if anybody on the board has questions specific to the information provided, and we can kind of go from there.
Sure.
John, do you have a question?
No, really, just to get into a little bit of the business plan and projections. But I certainly have gone and viewed the building. I understand where you're going. That really was where we wanted our initial facilities to go. They are and are across the street, which was business zoned. That didn't happen because that necessitated town meetings and things like that. So that was the general area that we wanted to drive the marijuana business to.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to have the facility where. So Mr. DiMartino owns this building, and he also owns that building. The building, obviously, the cultivation facility would be here. And if you look at it, there's a storage facility here, so there's no residential butted. It's abutted by a wooded area across the street, also industrial. You know, Route 44 is right down there, it's a mile from 495. It's, it's a perfect place, I think, for a cultivation facility. And from the town's point of view, from an impact point of view, currently, there's two businesses that operate out of this one business. And, you know, with the deliveries and whatnot, this use would actually be less impactful than what's currently there, and it would be more profitable for the town. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good situation for the town. And you have a known quantity that Mr. DiMartino's been in town for a number of years now. He's not someone coming. We're not looking to break ground, we're not looking to clear trees. You know, the facility as it is will obviously need to be renovated to accommodate the business, to, for security. We'll have to go in front of the planning board and all of that process, but I think.
No, I think it's a great spot.
I think it's a really good spot for this kind of use.
Right, and my questions would hover just briefly around the business plan. The projections are very high, which I would love. But the projections, when you get up into the 30 to 58 million, can't be just for that building. I would assume, if you can make a $60 million business out of a $15,000 grow, that's a good deal.
Well, I let my clients address the projection, but I would tell you is that they've consulted with an award winning campus grower, and they've developed a model.
I'd love them to do that.
Yeah, I don't know. Dennis, if you want to speak to that, or?
I was going to let Dominic speak first, or however you guys want to do it.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear, because this is all, the revenue projections that you're talking about relate to actually retail operation grow. And I'd like to know, you know, where, if you're planning on doing any retail and manufacturing as well within Lakeville.
Yeah, so right now, we're applying for a cultivation facility. I think the idea of saying that, that they're interested in pursuing further development was just to say that, you know, just not to take you guys by surprise that we come back in a year from now. But also to say, look, we're, we'd like to work in this community, and we're going to invest in this community in the future. And we have plans to become a bigger presence here. So that's really.
To answer your question, we are looking to fully integrate, as you discussed earlier, with other applicants.
Yeah, because I think that, again, this is going to be another piece that we'll have to discuss. This is one other twist to cultivation only with an HCA. Because I see from your projections, what you're doing is you're taking an estimated wholesale price of $2,000 per pound, you're taking the 3% impact payment on that, which is how you're getting these numbers down here. As opposed to when we have our fully vertically integrated partners that we've been working with, we've been charging them at $25 per pound of production. So that's a difference, because it certainly makes a difference with regard to what these payments would look like. So again, we need to discuss, again, for consistency's sake, what that looks like for someone who's coming in just on cultivation, and it's not just the $25 per pound. That was when it was being legalized and moved into the existing operation, so.
They did make it clear to us that it's going beyond cultivation.
Well, not necessarily in Lakeville, though. I mean, that would be one thing, I mean, maybe it will be, but, you know, that's, again, because I think.
What are the plans for Lakeville?
Yeah, and then I think that would be, we'd be negotiating the HCA in good faith based upon what we have in front of us currently. Because we wouldn't be reducing it to the per pound fee for cultivation when it's included in a retail operation that's happening here. So I think that's.
We can, any, obviously, you know, the price per pound and all that stuff, it probably is negotiable.
And I mean, you already put it in here, so I'm happy to see it. I just wanted to make sure, again, that as we talk about consistency in what we're doing with these contracts, that we want to make sure that all of our business players are on the same page when they come to the table.
And that's really a policy consideration for each town. Some towns look at it at, what is the impact of this particular business facility going in? And they adjust the prices of other towns at flat fees. I understand the argument, you want larger players in initially, but I would, I think the counterargument to that would be that, you know, more of the business, more of the money for small business stays in the community. So, I mean, there's a lot of balancing, and that's just really a policy. And we'll obviously work with whatever, whatever the decision is.
And you certainly can get the existing host community agreements that we've written, if you haven't already.
Yeah, actually, I do.
Sure. And we can provide.
So, yeah, give us the explanation as to your business, I guess.
So I think, just because Dennis and I rehearsed this, why I was going to go first. And we don't want to screw that up, because it could go bad quickly. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dominic DiMartino. I live in Connecticut. I've been self-employed for 25 years. I've managed retail companies and also remanufacturing and manufacturing companies. I've employed more than 300 employees in the mid-2000s. I currently still employ over 150 employees. I started to invest in real estate in the early 2000s. I've invested in Lakeville for the past six years as a landowner. I invested in Lakeville in June of 2013, when I purchased 200 Millennium Circle, a building that is 70,442 square feet. My second building in Lakeville was 415 Millennium Circle. It is a building that is 23,128 square feet, and that's the application in front of you. I purchased that in May of 2015. At this time, I've acquired almost a million square feet of commercial real estate that I own and manage. I also hold a state of Connecticut general construction license and construction company named DiMartino Development and Construction, which does mostly tenant fit outs and building repairs and maintenance. This is a brief description of some of my accomplishments, but I seem to have left out my greatest accomplishments, which is my wife for 20 years and my three children. I would now like to show an aerial photo of the industrial park which is presented in front of you. I have a floor plan of the proposed cultivation as well. And basically, if there are any questions, I'd have to answer.
I think, I know one of the things that we always ask is, you know, just of our business partners is, you know, capitalization. And kind of where that would be coming from, self-capitalized. We just want to make sure that we have.
It's part of.
Is that the first? Sorry, there's three of them that I probably have all mixed up in my head. Who of us tonight, that was the one that has it?
We sent in the growers' resume.
You have it, yes.
Yes, she did that.
I'm mixing you up with another one.
The two facilities again.
Funny pun.
We're not looking to go out and acquire or lease a building. We already own the two facilities. If you look at my personal management statement, my partner's personal management statement, you'll see that we, I think we're equipped to handle the task at hand. Of course, we're starting here, but I purposely put the first building on the map because I would, I think this is new territory for a lot of people. Like to get started here, and then obviously, if things go well.
Is the second building in Lakeville? They're adjacent. Yeah, I know one is, I didn't know the other, because the lines are funny over that one, if they change.
Both of these commercial buildings are located in the industrial park. The largest building is set furthest back from the road. And the building where we're making the application is set, you know, second behind where they sell the RVs off of 44. You know, the park is an industrial park, and there is no housing located within, you know, near the park, around the park. I think that there's some type of forestry or preservation behind these facilities. I mean, it's, there's nothing there.
There's also vacant land in front that I'm sure is for sale.
Yeah, but there's some issues with that.
What is Dennis going to be presenting, just so I don't ask Dominic all the questions?
Dominic's going to cover basically most of anything building.
And you're going to do what, the finances and the business?
Oh, yeah, whatever, cultivation, finances.
This is the site, 415 Millennium Circle. That's the distance from exit six, so easy on, easy off to get, you know, people put out of the community without much disruption. There's some current operators there, we located over here. They would probably be using exit five, but it just shows you distances. We've hired Zenith Consulting to do our surveying. This is the existing building, the parking, you can see the parcel property that I own is quite large. The building can be expanded, we can expand parking, we can do a lot with the site. So it's underutilized. This is the actual, this is the drawing of the facility. We had hired a company to lay it out, which was, they felt was the most effective use for this particular space. And then it would act as a, perhaps a feeder, if this was, if this worked well, to still be able to utilize this, or perhaps go to the other building. And I think from here, I'll let Dennis take the floor, because he'll be better than us.
When you talk about potential expansion, how big could that become when you talk to?
This building is 24,000 square feet. We feel, we feel that with Zenith Consulting, we probably could double the size of the building. But quite honestly, before we would double the size of that building, we'd probably go across the street into our building, we own it, it's 75,000 square feet.
And you could make an additional.
The one on the back there. No, you'd go, you'd utilize the other building before you do an expansion.
So this is the building that we're here presenting. This is our little facility here. This building is 70,000 plus square feet. This building's 20,000.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Fantastic, so good evening, my name is Dennis Carjanis. I've worked in finance for over 15 years. In that time, I've brought several companies public to the New York Stock Exchange and the NASDAQ. I have a vested interest in many marijuana companies across the country. And I believe that this whole situation is eerily similar to the prohibition when it ended in 1933, that we're going to wake up at some point, there will be some sort of Volstead Act for marijuana where it makes it federally legal, and that'll obviously take the shackles off. The reason that I think that's important is I think Lakeville can position themselves to be a beacon for growth in the marijuana industry. And I think that to do that, they're going to have to be ahead of the curve, which is kind of what you guys are now. I do know that there's other companies here. I think that this sandbox is plenty big enough to play with everybody to be good and fair. And, you know, on a personal level, I think that I want this company to have a small carbon footprint. I think that we can integrate geothermal with solar, and we could really take the carbon footprint down on it and not really suck much resources out of the town to be able to accomplish the goals of growing the way that we think we could. I've already achieved this in several other properties where, you know, I've run 10, 20,000 square foot buildings for $20, $30 a month. So that's not, it's not made up, it's very easy. If you look at the numbers for Colorado and California that are reporting as far as tax revenue, obviously, the numbers are staggering. I believe we can take what they've done, and I have connections out there, bring it here, and make it better. We have much more foot. We have much more foot traffic than any of those other states can ever dream of having here in Massachusetts and I think that, you know, we can utilize that here. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great. Did you have any questions specific to any of this?
No.
Okay. What, in terms of the, well, actually, hang on a second.
And also, just one more thing, I think that vertical integration, just to touch on a point that you made a while ago, two, two points to touch on. Vertical integration is very important in this business because you have to control both heads of the snake. You have to control the tail and the head because you're growing a plant and there are obviously variables that can come in there and you may have to price accordingly and changes accordingly to make that snake continue to move. And secondly, I think everybody should pay their way to plan Lakeville. I know that you said that you didn't agree with economic empowerment and I agree with that because the reason that Disney is Disney is because it's not priced as Six Flags. Six Flags is Six Flags, Disney is Disney. This should be the Disney of Raleigh, right here, in Lakeville. This should not be Six Flags, so everybody should pay their way and I agree with that.
And Dennis and I have had discussions in regards to this, the $50,000 fee that you're asking for, quite honestly, it's, you know, that's the price to play, to play the game.
Happiest check I ever wrote.
We'd write the check tomorrow.
I guess as, as we get into it, explain to me how you get to the 50 million, obviously that must encompass retail sales, other buildings, other square footage. You don't get there from that building?
No, you don't get there from just to grow. So if you look, the reason that I added cultivation on one slide and dispensary on the others is because the town of Lakeville, obviously, they prosper much further by having both here. But if you look at those dispensary sales, right underneath it, year one, it's only one dispenser. By year three, there's three dispensaries and that's how you get to that $58 million number because you're not only spinning it and it's the same thing with grow. In the first year, we anticipate only having two harvests, obviously after that, three and then following four, four, and you'll get a better rotation through the crops and that happens in any cultivation, whether you're in Colorado or California or anywhere in between, the, the number of harvests per year will grow as you begin to get the building layout better and your rotation better.
Right. But to substantiate the numbers, the grow would move into the other building to, to get to these kind of?
To be able to have 12 flowering rooms, we're going to need a bigger building to get to there.
Okay, okay. I just didn't see it happening in this.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right. It's never going to happen there. And also, we judge that on, you know, that $58 million number, that was based on, you know, we're having a retail location and we're selling ounces for $300 an ounce. There's also in this slide a projection on, we don't plan on just selling marijuana, obviously we want to make edibles, we want to make candies, but we don't want to make, just, we want to make the best of everything. We want it to be the gold standard, so to speak. And when you look at that and you go through the numbers, that $300 per ounce, when you start breaking it down into edibles and you start breaking it down into concentrates, you actually make far more than $300 an ounce. So believe it or not, that number is actually low and that number can go up substantially depending on what you do with the marijuana.
John, the money is not in the flower or the leaf.
Yeah, that's the lower.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so that number is lower based that just on flowers.
To the oils and things like that, okay.
Yeah, huge valuator in concentrates and the.
Yeah, it goes up exponentially, monster.
Who figured you'd be making those little inserts to go on vape?
You're killing it.
It's just a gigantic part of the business.
We were at the Javits Center in New York and they were showing just the machines to fill these things, 350, 400,000.
Really, it was driven by the vape idea and then it was driven by, there's no odor. So once there's no odor, there's no, no harm, no foul, if you will.
Yeah.
A different story, but who figured that business?
Genius.
Would, would create a, an oil business that's beyond imagination?
A very close friend, a guy that I consult with about this stuff and has helped us consult on this, built the million square foot facility out in Long Beach, California. That is right now the largest concentrate facility in America. Obviously, I don't anticipate a million square foot process facility in Lakeville happening, but that is who we're also looking to consult with it. Now, I'm going to use everything that I can have access to in California, Colorado, and areas in between to help bring that here and help this.
Do you have any kind of a commitment to a retail dispensary in Lakeville?
I would like to at least have one in Lakeville. If you look at the flower building in the front, there is actually a really ideal location that is all brick and kind of separated from the building. That would be the idea for spot number one, but you know, obviously that all hinges on you guys.
In the front over here, there's a 400 square feet of office that wants to be converted into retail, bringing people down inside there.
Okay. But initially, if you grew in the front building, are you going to ship that out of Lakeville to other dispensaries in your?
Initially, yes. Initially, yes, yeah, because we're not going to be able to get rid of everything that we're making, we're going to be making more than we can get rid of and have that down.
Do you have licenses in those other towns yet?
No, we have, we haven't done anything as far as the retail side until we spoke to you guys first. Because we'd obviously like to keep everything here. We're here, we've been here before, we didn't just show up and want to stay here.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, so what is our next step then? What do we want to see in addition to what they've provided to move this forward?
So within our processes, we need the HCA to move forward, I think to planning board anyways, kind of the next step or ZBA, right? I know that they kicked it back at one point in time because they didn't have those community agreements. So, you know, that's the last piece for us to really work with, with you guys is the host community agreement. We have the template already. I think, you know, we talked about it, we need to change this one just so that it's not with the $25 per pound, but it's just the 3% upfront would be the $50,000. We have $10,000, you know, per year in charitable to all the local organizations. If you're amenable to that, I mean, that's what we'll put together, I think, and we have town council just send it to your council and.
Great.
There we go.
Sounds fantastic to me. I think the next, next step on the permitting process would be with the planning board, a special permit. We'd have to have a community outreach meeting and all of that that goes with it.
And John and I will be the only ones in attendance again. Maybe Aaron will come too.
I may go.
We'll be the only ones in attendance.
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, the outreach.
If the public doesn't go, is the point.
Right.
For some reason. I'm on the planning board in terms of the town that I live in and it is a struggle. I mean, nobody comes to the meeting, nobody participates, but everybody lives to complain, so it's.
That's democracy.
It's the town government.
Yeah, so.
Democracy. That's the template for all towns.
Yeah, I think it's great, you know, you've been here, you know, in Lakeville and you've been a business partner in Lakeville. So, you know, certainly we're, we're no stranger to, this seems to be the cannabis meeting night here in Lakeville.
I think it's going to be the Mecca. I try to think of the.
Just show how long you've been here. No, like, I'm excited about this.
Thank you very much.
You know.
Well, I appreciate your guys' time.
Yeah, so I'm going to motion that we send the HCA over to town council as we just discussed and have them forward it to their town council or their council.
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very much, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. We have a few minutes, we're going to meet with Northeast Alternatives, but we can't do it until 7:30 because that's when it's posted, so we're going to do a few things in the interim to try to get through our agenda. Number six is to vote to sign a bond anticipation note, ban from the separate repair loan program. So we received some information relative to that and this looks like $200,000. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Just a quick question, please. Do we get the 200 and redistribute it or do we draw it down from somewhere? Do we get the, we get the full 200?
The full 200.
Okay. And I had the schedule, but how much is that costing us? It just gives the percentage, right?
It's on the one-year band, it's $5,100. The bid came in at 2.55.
Okay, okay. So that follow-up comes in the town, then the board of health distributes it and we charge 5% and so on and so on.
And, right, and the 5% that we collect pays the interest on this. But I did not, I didn't know that I'd have the paperwork today.
What's the band rate?
And your typical vote is to vote to sign the bond anticipation note in the amount of 200,000 at a rate of 2.55 with Unibank for Savings due on February 11th, 2020.
Is Unibank a little bit, some better? Is it a little better?
Yes.
I have that scheduled, I didn't think they were.
Well, the purchaser is Newbury Port 5 Cent Savings Bank.
Okay, okay.
So he made the motion, I seconded it. For discussion purposes, so.
I'm sorry, you're right, John. Unibank is the paying agent, so in the motion will be Newbury Port 5 Cent Savings Bank.
Yes, okay, okay.
Yeah, so with regard to the $200,000, do we, if we need to take another pay down, then we'll bond the entirety of it?
Well, we don't bond, it's the trust.
It's the Clean Water Trust, we'll bond that thing after.
When, you know, I talked with Nate today, if they get in five applications and they're, you know, they're getting close to using up the 200,000, the board of health will just be in touch with the treasurer to borrow another 200. And then when the Clean Water Trust is ready to bond, they do one bond for all the communities. Then we might get all of it at once, but they, they don't go out to bond very often.
Yeah, so we'll just keep banning this every time up until renewal until they come through and they bond it.
Right.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor? All right, the motion carries, it's unanimous. All right, it's 7:30, so we're going to move to agenda item number four. This is to meet with Northeast Alternatives and to discuss their proposal for a medical and recreational marijuana cultivation facility at 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. We received some information on behalf of the applicant, a cover letter, a balance sheet, a letter of intent, object to lease and a business plan. Welcome, thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, guys, thanks for the time, we appreciate it. Yeah, I'm Chris Arkins, CEO of Northeast Alternatives, my CFO, Rich Rosier, and COO, Kyle Bishop. Thank you for your time tonight. We've entered an agreement for an option to lease the space at 310 Kenneth Welch Boulevard, unit number four, from Cold Source Solutions, total of 85,000 square feet. If we're selected to locate there, we are an existing business, we've, we've been in business since 2016. We currently just opened the number, I think, 7th or 8th, depending on who you're listening to in the media, recreational store in Fall River, we opened last Sunday. So we, we have an existing facility in Fall River, above 15,000 square feet, both cultivation, manufacturing and retailing. We have, we have additional locations around the state that we are currently in negotiations for. So we're looking for a larger facility in order to meet the demand both for those facilities, the Fall River facility and our production, you know, for wholesale edibles and, and all that, that market. We, we understand that you guys have already, you know, know this building. I think Nature's Remedy is already in this, this building. This is a separate piece of, you know, it's a condo property is the way we understand it. And so I believe you guys have already vetted this property and understand that there's the required amount of parking, it's in the right zoning. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys could have as far as our business and our intentions.
Okay, so I guess one question is, do you have the intention of doing dispensary in Lakeville?
We would, we would like to. We, we are currently looking for opportunities there. We, we understand that there is a retail operation being proposed at this building, so we wouldn't want to be there, of course. We are looking for locations to do that, but currently we do not have one.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking in terms of the last conversation we had with these folks that are doing the grow, but eventually they may want to do.
Yeah, we certainly would. You know, we, we also have partners that we, we've entered management agreements with, services management and wholesale agreements in which we, in effect, provide, you know, all of our expertise around retail. We provide the wholesale products to their businesses, so, you know, we are in contract with a number of different businesses in which we're going to service, you know, up to currently nine retailers. So in this 85,000 square feet, you know, our cultivation will, you know, so we'll double stack that, so, you know, we'll get to a fairly large size currently, we would, we would take that down in 40,000 square foot increments.
Okay. John, would see do you have a question?
I'm going to recuse myself till I can file a disclosure with the state on this conversation.
Okay. The, explain to me, I guess, the Fall River operation, which is a retail operation, where do you get your product from?
We cultivate there on site.
Okay, okay. So you'd envision the 80,000 square feet being mostly cultivation?
Correct.
To.
Product manufacturing, product manufacturing as well.
Yes, yes, creating finished product that you would send to other retail storefronts.
Edibles, beverages, concentrates, yeah.
Right. And your other experience, and this is, says this is a nonprofit.
Currently, yeah, we entered as a medical operator, that was the requirement, so we're in the process.
Are you going to change that to profit? And when will that be done?
We're in the process currently.
Okay. So I guess that somewhat, somewhat answers it. Certainly, I always liked that someone would pick a location that you can do the retail, it can be vertically integrated right there. That isn't going to happen here. Somewhat surprises me that even the sublease to the same address surprises me, but that's, that's a legal situation, not my situation. I see the poundage of 24,000 pounds, which on some cases I look at a business plan and say, holy crap, you're producing three times more than I think you should be producing and this is a third of what I think you should be producing. So tell me how you come up with 24,000 pounds?
Should I take that one?
Give me this.
So I've been doing this for a long time, I'm from Colorado, and we do a 200,000 square foot facility. And so when you take the, you know, the total square footage, you're going to, it's a simple math equation, at about 56 grams per square foot on average, we averaged at 56 in Colorado over the course of three years across 100,000 square feet. You've got to figure that, you know, 30% of your space is going to be bathrooms and hallways and then another 30% of that space of canopy space is going to be used for vegetative plants, right? So that leaves you with a much smaller percentage of, of space that's actually flowering canopy. So then you take that flowering canopy, you average it out, the historical 52 grams a square foot, six pulls a year, so six harvests a year, and that's what you end up with. So it's very accurate. I think it's, it'll be within hundreds of pounds to that number.
And so.
It's low to me.
I haven't done the math because I have other businesses that have a number that's much
greater than that and a smaller square footage, but that will all be controlled, if you will. So if I took it, just give me, I'm going to say 10,000 square feet, gives me how many pounds? Just approximate.
Well, I can tell you right now, our facility, that's an interesting number because our facility currently, right now, we have actually 10,000 square feet of, of square footage.
Give me that.
We have, of grow.
Yeah, perfect.
Of grow. And, and we do about 100, between 160, 180 pounds a month.
So our flowering canopy, there are 4,900 square feet, okay? So then we multiply that times the historical average 56 grams, that's 274,000 grams. We multiply that times six harvests a year and we divide that by the pound and that lands us at 3,626 pounds.
3,000. Per 10,000 square feet.
Okay, that would be a 10,000 square foot building, not a 10,000 square foot canopy. Big difference. The canopy, the flowering area would be 4,000 or 4,900.
One's roughly 50%.
Yeah, it's about half.
One half becomes grow.
Correct.
Okay.
Flowering canopy.
Flowering canopy. Well designed.
I always like to write the numbers down.
Do you have any other questions relative to the numbers or the finances of this?
No.
Okay. So I guess the question is, do we wanna proceed without, Mitzi, she's recused herself with the intention of joining this conversation in another meeting? Is that something we wanna wait for?
You, you come back into the conversation later?
Yeah, I'm gonna file a disclosure with the state.
You will not?
I'm gonna file a disclosure with the state, ethics commission.
Okay.
And then I can come back in.
Okay.
So when do you think you might come back, in a month? I'm just trying to say when, I just wanna know how long we would delay the next discussion?
Probably till the next meeting, I assume, I mean, I'll just file it, it'll be, I'd say a week, a week as opposed to a month.
Yeah.
I would feel more comfortable doing that because of Mitzi's expertise with the numbers and her expertise in the business. I think that we would be remiss if, if we didn't do that, honestly. So what I'm gonna do is, is table this till our next meeting, we'll make a decision.
Is the ethics, I mean, is this an ethics on this particular obligation, or?
Yes. It's a, through another, through another, through another, and I need to just make sure that there's no issue.
Gotcha.
So when's the next meeting?
February 11th.
I mean, we do have other opportunities, you know, just full disclosure, you know, we are actively in the middle of a number of negotiations, and are narrowing down, you know, where is the right place for us to be. I mean, we really like this opportunity for a number of reasons, mostly around the co-generated energy side of it. But we don't, you know, we have our things, and our timing is fairly tight around our business plan, and so if there's any way to speed that up in a, in a special meeting or whatever, we would, you know, we would, we would like to see that happen if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, we'll certainly try to accommodate, I can't make any promises, but like I said, Mitzi's expertise in this area is, is absolutely, I think is absolutely critical to any decision we make. Now, of course, if she had to recuse herself completely from it, then that's a different story, but at this point in time, she doesn't believe she has to, and I would like to make that decision.
Yeah, no, we get it.
As part of the team, so.
Great.
All right. Thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, agenda item number five, we'll have to wait till 8 o'clock for that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Heard tonight a lot of questions about retail, will every company bring retail here? I, you know, whatever the town thinks is best for the town, I support. I believe in a free capitalistic market, but if it's to drive more revenue, I don't think that's the, the result of having more retail. It actually, if you look at what's happening in the South Shore, it's the most populated part of Massachusetts that's allowing recreational sales. There, every town, except for six of them in the South Shore, is allowing retail sales, which means that the outside traveling population is going to be significantly reduced in communities around here. And having more dispensaries is only going to result in hurting the few that could succeed and be very beneficial to the community. So I just wanna put that out on the table, that's my thought.
Sure. No, and it's, and that's a great conversation that we necessarily haven't had, I mean, we've had it in the past, how many retail facilities do we want to allow in town? And I don't think it should be an unlimited number. I think that we really have a duty to decide what we think is in the best interest of the town and, and stick to that. But that honestly is probably a decision that will be made by this board, and I'm no longer on it. So, I mean, but it's absolutely something that, that this.
All I ask is the board think about it.
No, that's, that's as important, that's as important as what's the price to, to, to get your foot in the door in the town, in the sense of, that can be a policy determination that can limit certain types of businesses. The overall number of businesses, or types of businesses, number of types of businesses, is, is a critical decision that this board needs to have, have a conversation about.
Well, it, that's, I mean, as we look towards the spring town meeting, or the annual town meeting, that's, town meeting will actually be the one to really establish that. If we bring it forward as to limiting the number of retail licenses, it's limited by town meeting vote. Whether we end up just as a board deciding not to negotiate host community agreements on the retail front.
Well, that's the practical.
Is the other practical way to control that number, but that's not a policy that's set in stone, and it's, and I think that that is certainly something that, you know, I want to discuss with the townspeople, with the planning board. Again, you know, as we've gone through this process now, similar to what we did in March last year, is to have another, let's have another revamped meeting of the boards and commissions, to really talk about what does this mean within our town, and what do we wanna see? And that would be one policy decision if it was made to move that forward to town meeting to limit the number of retail establishments. What that would mean, I believe, is two, it may be three, because it's a round up, and we did just issue another liquor license, so I, I think we'd have to just, I don't know how many full-scale liquor licenses we have now in town.
I, I think the percentage, they was only two, we'd only have two.
Still two, still two, okay. I wasn't sure, we, we kicked it over, because it's a, a round up on that calculation, and I know we just added another liquor license, so. But that being said, that's, that's an option. I know, John, you've, you know, expressed an interest in not doing that.
I guess my problem is, we can't predict who's gonna be successful, and how much traffic they'll really be. That is, we, we maybe, we, we could have at one time predicted Nature's Remedy, because they were moving along, and then we, we threw a fly in the ointment by wanting to ban recreational sales. So their recreational sales that perhaps would have been coming online June or July 1, won't happen. You know, it would be pushed back, or it'd be six months, nine months, or 12 months. So it's very hard to predict who's gonna be successful. You might stop and, and, and not be successful, not, not go forward, not do certain things. So even though we've done a host community agreement, it's, it's, if I limited it and to two, and they both were what I call losers, and I can't predict that, then we don't have any facilities, even though we have two host community agreements. So my reluctance was, I, I don't know how the business plans play out.
That's a fair point. I would also say that five dispensaries would end up in everyone being losers too.
I, I certainly agree with that. I mean, I can sit here and say I'm astounded that 310 may host another marijuana grow facility, but who am I? I'm, I'm not the landlord, I'm the selectman.
I think it would be easier if, if.
I do, I do agree with the point. Until an operator opens, and I don't think, I mean, my personal opinion, it's not the operator's job to be successful, the traffic will, will come. The operator has to make sure they're abiding by regulatory's, you know, staying on top of finances, hiring the right people. I don't think the traffic flow is a decision factor.
Right, right, so I can't control that too. So my reluctance is to control the number of licenses too early on, and I certainly say, Jesus, if there were five successful businesses all in, all on 100,000 square foot buildings, holy crap, we would be the matter of, of marijuana. That, that oftentimes doesn't happen.
But cultivation aside, just specifically referring to retail. And I agree, you know, by all means, for the cultivation.
Right, right, Nature's Remedy, Nature's Remedy, well, everyone's changed their business model somewhat.
All, all I'm.
Somewhat already, and no one's opened yet, yeah.
Totally, and the regulatory hurdles we're all going through are astronomical. But my point is, if your goal is to generate revenue for the community, and that should be the goal, achieving that goal is expanding and allowing more cultivation into your community. You do not achieve that goal by allowing more retail into the community. There is, there is a cap limit to that.
I agree with that.
And, and the thing too with this is, you know, again, the minimum that we could limit it to would be two, but it's, you can't limit it to one. I mean, that's just based upon the percentage of liquor licenses, but you would limit it to 10, I mean, if that's what you chose to. So again, it's something that, you know, we'll talk about, and I think that it would be good to have an update, you know, to some of the other town departments, to give them an overview, maybe that happens during our budget presentation, I'm not sure, you know, when we come through and say this is where we're looking in terms of future revenue, and have a conversation about marijuana revenue, you know, within the town as well. But, you know, I, I do agree that it's, it's a little premature to set a number based upon, you know, where this is going, but we'll have to make sure that we're consistent with how we're approaching the, you know, again, we haven't had a single additional retail establishment in front of us. That has been a definitive plan right now. All we have is two right now.
Right.
All we have are two. And everything else is cultivation, so.
Can I have your quick copy?
We'll go ways after him.
No problem, no problem. It's no problem, you got a great last name.
Yeah, I do, it's not a good R, but a great last name. I look at it like he has a great last name, I'm 64. The, just the one thing, I, all, is just to kind of finish it, is that we all still have to get through ZO planning and ZBA for our, for our recreational permits. And so we still have quite a road to go, and I think that'll determine, you know, if you can get through that process, will, if you'll have, you know, how many dispensaries you can have and where they can be located. I think we're gonna start, you know, the Monroes are gonna start down that path, I know Alex's, we've already, we're later on the agenda for our recreational grow, but I think.
For the 7th next week.
Well, there's a little board here on us also tonight, number 8, 19, but yeah, on February 7th. So I think that will also help determine, Alex, you know, how many are gonna be here, and, you know, how, how to get through that. Just a thought.
Great, thanks.
Sure, do you have a?
Yeah, two things, I, I think that vertical integration, if you're going to allow a growery here, you should almost, I know that when they started doing the economic empowerment, it was one growery and three dispensary licenses what kind of came with it when, when this whole idea first started to spawn here. I think that as doing the growing, you almost have to have retail in order to control both, you'll see as it goes along, like everybody can put together plans and everything, but you'll see as it starts to unroll, and you can go to Colorado, California, or other states that it's been legal for a while, and you can see how it rolls. People that, the companies that control the growing and the retail, not just like independent retails or independent growth, those are the companies that really thrive and push forward. And just in Denver, I pulled up the stats quick, there's 31 McDonald's in Denver, there's 169 rec dispensaries. Obviously, that's a bit egregious, but they're all making money right now. 169.
That's not true.
That's a false.
They're not wrong, they're above the number, or they're what?
No. Retail in Colorado is an absolute disaster.
Well, I'm saying is, that's 31 McDonald's and 169 recs, that's, that's overdone, but I think you can scale it. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking, Alex, I didn't, I finished, let you finish your point, I'm just making a point. I think that that's a bit above and beyond where it should be, there's 31 McDonald's and 169 recs, that should probably be pulled back a lot, but I do think that when you guys are considering giving a grow license, it should kind of look to go hand in hand just to make sure that they stick and they can control both ends of the spectrum and for integration.
Just to, to that front as well, is, there's plenty of other communities too.
Yes, for sure.
I mean, we, we will decide as a community what is, you know, our community's characteristics, so.
No problem.
And I appreciate the stats.
Yeah, yeah, but that's a decision that, that, as, as Mitzi pointed out, I mean, I think we can control it through policy, but ultimately, that's a decision that, that should be put forward to the voters to determine if they wanna have a limit on it, because they're the people that really should have the say in that. But with that said, we're very much in support of, of talking with and working with, with folks that are, that are doing marijuana, because we think that there's a huge opportunity for the town, so we appreciate you coming in.
We do, we do listen what you're saying to us.
Yep. All right. We still have a little time, so I wanna go to agenda item number eight. This is, actually, you go here for 19?
Yes.
That's a new business thing.
That would be wonderful.
Let's do that. Take care, Alex. 19 is new business, so this is comments relative to site plan review, special permit, Nature's Remedy at 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. So we received some information relative to their application in front of the planning board. Did anybody have any questions or comments to the planning board that we wanna put forward? Do you have any questions?
I have, I mean, we've visited and revisited this place so many times, my head spins. So the facility is already built, so we, we've sent them to the planning board because that was us taking it out of our hands, and I get why we did it, gave it to the planning board. This isn't the reinvention of the wheel, this is an existing business. So I hope, we've supported this business right from day one, so I hope that the planning board is doing the same. I can't control what the planning board does, but I'm certainly gonna go to the meeting, and, you know, I can't say, John Paul, that comes to the back of the room and says, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, this is already built building, what the hell are we doing?
Right, but do you have any questions specific to the design?
No. Actually, I've been there so many times, my head spins.
They've been very supportive about this, and they have recognized John in, in defense of the planning board, this is just simply, it's a necessary, what we have to do in order to get our recreational license. In order for the state to issue us our PCR, we need to go back to the planning board because it's a separate business, which is recreational. We had, we brought them on a tour of the facility, Bob attended the meeting last time, they simply have, this is by law, they have to do this, they've been very supportive and, and exactly feel the same way you do, we've complied with everything, we've given them the site plan, the parking is adequate, we are not gonna have one more employee because it's recreational, we may have to have one more employee to change, put different colored tags on the plants, but other than that, it's the same parking, same people, and they're very aware of that, and I have to say, they've been very good to work with in getting this done. We presented a 200-page packet, which is all the information that was required. Rita and her staff have been exceptional in helping us walk through the guidelines as to what we're supposed to provide, 13 packages. So at the end of the day, I think they're in the same position you are, and I have to say, they've been very good to work with, and we appreciate it.
It's just a formality.
Yes, we hope so too, but they've been great.
Thanks. Do you have?
I have no comments.
Okay. All right, so we're not gonna send any, any official correspondence to the planning board relative to this.
You don't want me to send the typical no comments?
Yeah, yeah, no comment.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks. Take care.
Okay, so we have, number eight is mass housing submitted. Our request for comments for Ridge Street Crossing Development, this is 40B project that we got.
I am also recusing myself from this conversation.
All right.
And why, there's no comment?
No comments.
Does that mean I can't get my tea?
You can get your tea. Nine, number nine, review and vote on special municipal employee status for the reserve police officers. So we appointed Harold H. Marshall as a part-time assistant animal control officer, he's also a reserve police officer. We, we have the proper disclosure form with the town clerk, so we're going to designate the reserve police officers as special municipal employees pursuant to MGL Chapter 268A, Section 20. So that is my motion.
I'll second that.
Mitzi, number nine is municipal employee status for reserve police officers. Motion has been made and seconded, do you have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Brewery Club of Middleboro wants the selectmen to allow Lake Cam to broadcast their annual auction. So move. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? South Shore Race Management wants to hold the Mullin Hill Christian Academy 5K on May 11, 2019. We have a request, fire chief and police chief have emailed us approving the route. Are they rolling?
Yeah.
Any questions about this one? All right, I move that we approve the race.
I'll second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. How do I do with 12? Oh, here it is. Philip Sherman is requesting the renewal of a temporary storage permit at 19 Stetson Street, I move that we approve it. Any discussion relative to the temporary storage permit? Karen Gunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have a request to hook up to Taunton Water from Paul Turner at 40.
We have a request to hook up to Taunton Water from Paul Turner at 44 and 46th Ward Allen Road. I move that we approve the request.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, is this, uh, is this gonna be coming to us as a 40B? But it's looking at the total?
Yes. 40B.
About two lots.
Three affordabilitys. Three affordabilitys out of the 12.
Okay.
Off Road Allen Road.
Is this, what's the, should we have a different process by which water approval, water hookup approvals go through with the 40B process?
No.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a separate process with the 40B with the water approvals.
Taunton will be happy.
Okay.
Taunton, what did you say, Rita?
Will be happy for more customers.
Oh, sure, sure.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Eight o'clock. This agenda item is to meet with Lorraine Parboni of Something's Brewing Book Cafe, Jason Hebert and Dean Wile of the Better Bean Coffee Company to discuss a licensing agreement for Something's Brewing Book Cafe. So we have some information, just to see if we received Jason's letter to meet with us, a letter from Lorraine, the lease for the building, and then the current license agreement for the karate studio, which is used for reference, um, because that's the manner in which the applicant would like to move this forward. Did anybody have any questions relative to this?
I guess, I, I never compared the two, so what is the karate stu- studio different from Something Brewing's current lease?
It's just a format, John, it's, because it's, um, only partial building, it should have been a license, uh, agreement.
So, so right, so the distinction is that it's, it's a different, uh, document or different contract that, that really provides similar rights, but it's not a lease per se. So they're licensing the building, but it would have similar terms. And we can have similar terms, we can have different terms, we really can do whatever you want with it, much not like renegotiating a lease or, or, or anything. So, I mean, I, I bring that up for the sake of discussion relative to the terms of, of the existing lease, whether we want that, whether there's other elements that we'd like to incorporate into it. But the name of the document, if you will, would, would be a license, which is similar but, but different.
It has all the same categories, my, we've just gone over it.
Yep.
Demnification and liability, all the important.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I know that your letter, you know, to us had said that you respectfully request an audience to discuss our plans and intentions for the future, so I'd love to hear what the plans and intentions are for the future of Something's Brewing.
Honestly, our plans and intentions are to keep it exactly how it is. Um, it's very similar to the current coffee shop that we own in Bridgewater. We don't really, we have the same similar sandwiches, different ingredients, but the coffee is the same speedo coffee roaster as out of Plymouth, uh, that's actually how we got connected with Lorraine. And we've already met with their staff, they're awesome, and our future is to keep that a place where our community can come and talk and be involved with each other. That's really been our goal, is to help build community and we've really been able to do that at Bridgewater. Uh, the amount of people that we could have gotten to come into our shop has doubled, uh, since we took it over. Uh, Jason could talk to more about the numbers and everything, but we don't really plan to change anything, keeping the same staff, keeping the same menu, and just continuing the operations for what it is right now.
Great, thank you.
Will you replace the one chess piece that's not like the others?
Uh, we could definitely look into that, for sure.
This weekend. You found it?
I found it.
Oh, there we go.
One question that often comes up is whether or not we change. One question that often comes up is whether or not we would change the name, we have no intentions of changing the name. We, we see that, we see it as a community staple. Excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm suffering from a cold right now, so I apologize for that. We see the name Something's Brewing as a community staple and we want to just maintain that name through, um, through our ownership of that business, as we've done with Better Bean in Bridgewater as well.
Just to give you guys a little bit about us, I'm Dean Wile, uh, I was born and raised in East Bridgewater. Uh, I actually live in the house my great-grandfather built, which is right next to the house I grew up in, so I haven't gone very far. Uh, we've owned the Better Bean now for almost three years, uh, we three years Marathon Monday. And, uh, I have an engineering background, but was working for large corporations, traveling all over the world, and I just didn't like that, I didn't feel like I'd get any roots in the ground. And so quit my job, Jason and I had a coffee shop, kind of fall into our lap, knew nothing about it, now I know everything about it. It's really a big chemistry set. Yeah, yeah. And it's been really fun to, to basically employ people, uh, and just help a community have a spot where they can come together, really. That helped start the community garden in East Bridgewater, uh, which was backed by one of the board of selectmen. It's grown double the size since we started it, uh, three years ago. And it's even grown to Bridgewater residents have joined the, the group as well. So it's, this, uh, location is far enough away that's kind of a different market, but it's close enough that it still feels like home, so.
Great.
I am Jason Hebert, I, actually, I grew up nine minutes from this location right here, not in Lakeville in East Ton. So I'm right down the street, right, right near the Coybrook Country Club. I am a, I am a recovering CPA right now. Sorry. That's why I say recovering, I have a, I have a background in finance and accounting business. Um, I worked at Bridgewater State University for a few years. Like Dean said, the coffee shop kind of fell into our lap. We used it as our own chemistry set, grew it to where it is today. And Something's, our goal is to have three strategic locations and we see Something's Brewing as, uh, an, an excellent addition to our portfolio, so we're hoping to move this thing forward fast.
Great.
John, do you have yours, Ron? I encourage you to do well. It's a great location.
Thank you.
All right, um, one of the things I wondered if we would talk about, and I don't necessarily have an opinion on any of these, is that it may be the fact that it's a license and not a lease answers this question, or, or there's enough of a distinction in my mind, but I think typically when, when you lease to a, a building, you, you, in a commercial setting, you do what's known as a triple net lease, um, and that puts more obligation on, um, the lessy, the lesser. For the sake of maintaining the building itself, I know from a town's perspective, we've had to maintain certain aspects or replace certain aspects of that building. And I just wanted to know what, what the board thought of that. And, and I'm, I'm not necessarily saying that we do that to the detriment of what you guys are trying to do, um, in terms of the cost, the overall cost of, of the license. But I just wonder if that's a conversation that anybody would care to have, and if, if the board doesn't want to, that's okay too.
I don't want to have that conversation.
Okay.
I'm fine not having that conversation, I think, you know, what has been a great benefit to this town is the ability to keep a building in a maintained state, as opposed to what it would turn into if it was not in such a maintained state. I think that, you know, you would probably, you'll know that, you know, our, our building inspector will be in there often, that people will be, you know, kind of mulling around from the town because we have the storage still, you know, down in the basement. And so I think that it still provides us an opportunity to, you know, keep a town building going that has an alternative use. I don't really look at this as a way to make money for the town, I think you're, you're probably saying in terms of trying to cover costs, you know, related to it.
Right, and I'm, well, and I'm, we don't even have to talk about it if, if you're not, if, if that's not an aspect that you, that you, I mean, it is, I mean, I think with the distinction where you're licensing and we're still using the building for town purposes, you can make an argument in, in the other way, but I think if you're looking at it from this, from what you just described, that's fine, and I, and John's good with it too, so.
Right, right.
So with that said, is there any other questions?
I guess I would have a question in terms of.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah. So what is this motion, and so I guess from my perspective, our town council has said that we should have a license, but are we assigning the lease into a license temporarily right now? I don't have, we don't have a.
It would be to enter into a license agreement for term of.
So we would be doing.
Number of year, one or two years. But before you do that, may, just to, um, verify that the rent would, um, still be the thousand, they pay the electric, um, eighty percent of the heat, all of those same terms and the, the water.
Right, so I guess the main question is.
Right, I'm not interested in changing anything.
And that, that's really what I was asking.
Right.
To be an annual license.
Annual, right, whether, whether you just take over it till it expires and then write another.
Why is it the end of February?
One year, I, I don't care what you do. I don't want to look at it in detail.
Would it be possible to do a two-year license? Just so, it's just one.
Continuity.
Yeah, that would be.
I don't appreciate it.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions too, in terms of signage, if we wanted to add signs outside of the building just to let the public know that it's, we're there, it's, it's just kind of hard to see when you're driving down or know that, know that Something's Brewing is there. Nothing extravagant?
That, that's a, that's not a question for our board, that would be a question for Nate, uh, the building commissioner.
Okay.
Um, and depending on what you want to do with signage, you may need to get, uh, get in front of the zoning board.
Okay, fair enough.
It's never easy.
Yet somehow we have no, when we were trying to put a giant billboard on Route 44, there's no rules or regs on a giant billboard.
And yet we authorize the signage to go on.
There is kind of a sign there, that's very faded.
Can't really see it.
Yeah, so we really just replace that, but.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion, um, that we, uh, approve a license agreement for the use of Something's Brewing Book Cafe, um, for a period of two years after drafted by town council with the same other terms and conditions.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy Millie.
All right, um, we got, uh, a letter of interest from Wayne.
Where?
Carina, the zoning board.
Okay, yep, yep, I'm with you.
What do, what do you guys think about this? Do you want to send him along to the ZBA, send this information along to the ZBA? Do you want to have him come in front of us and meet us?
We would, what first we would do is post, um.
We did it in the newspaper, we did all this in the newspaper.
I'm sorry, now the vacancy just came up.
I don't even know why we just don't send it to them.
On ZBA?
Concom, we've gotten two resignations.
Three on Concom?
I have two resignations.
Yeah, here's two on here.
The question I'm asking is that, that we didn't want to approve their recommendation to forward.
Oh, that's right.
Their guy. We also didn't ask them whether they had another associate member that they may want to promote. We somewhat unilaterally went out and advertised, got this guy. Do we want to take that responsibility upon ourselves as the appointing authority to meet him and appoint him? Or do we want him to go to the zoning board and see, and have the zoning board vet him?
I like the zoning board vetting him or, or any other committee, not just the zone, you know, if, if we publish it in the paper, I envision those resumes and emails would go to those appropriate boards and they would give their recommendations. And, and we can decide ourselves whether we want to go along with that recommendation.
Interview, sometimes what you do is you interview the applicant with the ZBA here, you know, a joint meeting.
Yeah, but they would have already talked to him, I want them to already have decided, do they want them or not want them.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with pushing this to the ZBA and saying, you know, you know, I'd like to have their opinion if they want to interview him, and also if they have any associate members that they would like to make full-time members. I think that that's a, you know, a reasonable way to put it forward.
They did.
Well, that was a different issue, but we've had different issues.
But that was somebody that we didn't want to bring forward, so.
Right, we also did not appoint that person as a full-time member previously, so that's a decision that had already been made.
Okay, so that's the plan then, we'll just, um, we'll do that. All right. Agenda item number 15 is to rescind the appointment of David Goodfellow to the Lakeville Emergency Planning Committee, Project Review Committee for 43D, and the Board of Health, as a Board of Health agent. So I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have to vote to accept the resignations of Keith, Keith Jensen and Kate Lynn Kennedy from the Conservation Commission, it's a lot of Cs, alliteration, I move that we accept them and advertise for letters of interest.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We need to vote to designate an animal control officer, an assistant animal control officers to the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, so I vote, or I should say, I move that we, uh, appoint David Freitz as our animal control officer, Darcy Lee, Jennifer Nash, and Harold Marshall as our assistant animal control officers to this agency.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Meeting minutes, um, for the 20th and January 7th, so December 20th, January 7th, and January 14th. Anybody have any changes?
I do.
All right.
Um, just on the first one, on December 20th, just the second vote that's on here, it says voted to approve the renewal for Saga Fusion, it wasn't a renewal, it was an initial license for Saga Future Fusion. So just to make sure that that, yeah, the liquor license, it wasn't a renewal.
Is it sushi or fusion, what are they, is it Saga Sushi?
Saga Sushi.
Yeah, I guess it's actually Saga Sushi.
But there's something, it's.
Whatever their name is, but.
It is fusion on there.
Yeah, but it really was to approve the liquor license, not the renewal.
Right.
No, I think it.
But they already had one.
Yeah, I think it was, I'm pretty sure it was the renewal.
We approved it the March before.
Really?
And then we went through all this fiasco, they already had one.
Forever to, to get over.
Oh, okay, well then there's an extra period.
We shouldn't have even been doing what we did.
Cause I just noticed.
They already had it.
So we're okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought that was a good.
Okay.
All right, so is that the only change? Or non-change?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing too, I just don't know if it needs to be in the minutes, and I'm okay if it is or it isn't, but just the last two sentences on page one of the January 7th, 2019, um, just where, you know, it's this slug and powder that said there needs to be standard operating procedures from the head of the ass wants it to the Bassfield Dam. And then it just gives opinions on that, so the last two sentences are opinions, uh, more discussion than, I think, what the substance of the conversation was, I just don't remember if that's exactly what was said. And you see where it says the Bassfield Dam should be fully down by November 15th? I, I mean, I'm okay with leaving it in there, if you want to leave it in there.
I don't even know what was said.
That's what I mean, so that's why.
I watched the tape if I was interested.
Care, but I don't think it changes the context of the minutes by taking it out.
Yeah.
I just don't want to end up.
Yeah, strike it if you want, because I agree that the minutes seem to be more wordy than they need to be.
We cut it way back.
Oh, you have.
It's just, yeah.
That's, that's been a.
We haven't got to, we opened the meeting and we closed the meeting.
Since I've been on boards in, in Lakeville, it just took way too long.
The state has probably changed the law, you can use the CDs and we don't know it.
No, we can't.
Jose's shaking his head still.
I, um, I actually, I went over Rita's review, so, sorry about that. So we have, um, agenda item number seven is Rita's annual review, which I completed. I, I really, I, I don't, I'll just give this to you to review Rita if you want, and you can look at it, um.
Oh, do you want me to hand these out?
Well, you asked me to make copies?
Oh, just for you and me, just so I can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
So my, um.
A couple back, I just couldn't have access to it. I can't edit it.
Generally speaking, Rita, I mean, I think you do an excellent job, I'm really happy that I've had the opportunity to work with you as a town administrator.
Thank you.
For the town. My pet peeves, if you will, are the fact that we don't have the town hall finished yet, that's no surprise. But that's really it, and I really, again, I appreciate all you've done, I think, um, you know, it was kind of bittersweet doing this, honestly, um, because it's the last one I get to do, um, and I had an opportunity to reflect on, you know, all the, all the great stuff you've done for the town, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just hand that down to her, and you can just review that and sign it and whatever you do with those, so.
I'd give you mine, I did the same thing, but I, I actually filled it out.
This year, all three of you did, then.
Well, yeah, I usually say, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean.
You can see me if you have any.
You can see me if you have any questions on my comments.
Well, I echo the sentiments of, you know, enjoying being able to work with you. And I wanted to read some of the pieces that I have in here, because I think that it's important that people understand, you know, the difficulties that you have working with a Board of Selectmen. I think, you know, that's always going to be a foundation of what we're looking for, I think, in the new town administrator, is how to handle it the way that you have. So, you know, I just want to read a couple of things from here. So one of my comments was that Rita's seen as a leader in the community and routinely establishes herself as the go-to person for problem resolution by the citizenry of Lakeville. In the past few years, her role has changed with regard to the formalization of her supervisory roles with the addition of the town coordinator and the split of her duties for the HR coordinator. With the day-to-day busyness of her job, Rita has not had as much ability to focus on long-term planning as I believe she would like. I think this will be an invaluable part of her remaining months in the town during the transitional time with the next town administrator. And I think that that's, at least when maybe some of your daily duties are shifted off your plate, maybe you'll get a little bit of fun to look to the future of Lakeville or.
Maybe the last week I'm here.
Maybe the last week.
The rate I'm going.
You know, and I think that, you know, I'll probably just read my overall final comments. There's a lot of comments I have on here. You know, and I had goals, really transitional goals, I think, for the next six months, because we have Rita for the next six months, and I think it's important that, you know, we figure out what you want to do and that it meets your expectations, because it's not a long-term horizon now, so what do we really think that we need to do to get things done? So my overall comments, which, oh, this is fine, because it's, you know, on all of us too. You know, Rita's a true asset to Lakeville and she'll be difficult to replace. Where her strengths lie in budgeting, overall municipal knowledge, town knowledge, personnel management. What's most impressive is, however, my time of working with Rita, that she manages to handle the different personalities of her Board of Selectmen in a harmonized manner. In such a difficult position where she must balance politics and effectiveness, Rita manages to avoid any appearance of favorite child syndrome and works with the strengths of each board member to get the most out of her board.
And so you know that you're her favorite.
I try to be. Rita's done a great, well, I'm doing this, right? Rita's done a great job of working on her goals over the past year to delegate more, which I really think you have. I think that's been a huge thing that you've managed to start to shed some of those responsibilities, which has been good, and to oversee many initiatives so as to set the town up for future success, which I believe she also needs in order to feel complete when her shift has ended, because you won't let it go otherwise, which is a good, a good thing. By working with the department heads and assisting them through their own struggles of municipal management, Rita's seen as a mother figure in the town and will leave big shoes to replace. So I wanted to make sure that I.
Nate calls me Aunt Rita.
So.
Mama Rita.
You got all that in that one.
Is Mama going to the meeting?
Is that like six font?
Yeah, it might be eight. You know, and then just with regard to the goals for the next year, you know, what I put on here was that Rita should continue the process of delegating and assigning tasks to help set up the future of the town of Lakeville. And over the next six months, I'd like to see Rita work on the transition to the new town administrator, but also to oversee and help train those who are brought in or are new to the town on how to be effective in their positions, so as to alleviate the burden from the other department heads. I think that during the transitional period with the new town administrator, this would be a great goal that will help move the town forward and to capitalize on Rita's personality and knowledge. So I think that that would be a huge, I'd like to see you be able to take the Aunt Rita role and kind of help everybody get to the next place, so that you're always going to be there, but.
And then, I didn't have this done in time for Friday night to pass out. But I think Aaron will like, what I did is my goals from last year, and I did complete a lot of what we had agreed would be my goals. And then other accomplishments, but on the second page, my goals for twenty nineteen through August second. My number one goal, Aaron, is to finish the town hall redesign before the new town administrator starts, so. We did, I don't know if you noticed.
So we can't hire the town administrator for another year?
You might have all noticed the tile did get down.
Oh, Jesus, yeah.
They're buffing and waxing it this weekend, and hopefully we will have, the first, we'll actually assess the second move, and then going on from there.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, so can we take a three-minute break? Sure.
Five-minute break?
Yeah.
Take five. Take a five before we start.
I mean, we're almost done.
We're almost done, we're almost done.
Sure. All right, so this is, old business is the last thing we need to do. Town hall redesign, we just got the update on that. Flooring is done, it's being polished. Community compact grant, currently drafting the hiring policy.
Been working on that for a while, but Mitzi's helping us on that.
All right. Police station update, there's some information here on that. It's Budget Report nine and Change Order nine, Change Order log from one nineteen.
I'd like to just flip to the Change Order log, you always like that.
Okay.
The second and the third pages, the second page being this one here, that's kind of marked up. So I'll just go back to, if I visited Marion's police station, which is where we started out, they have no fencing around the area, forgetting the security gate that I reluctantly approved, if you will, where we're doing the gate so that the public can't drive fully behind the police station into the, I'll call it, the impound area. And we certainly spent forty-something thousand dollars to do that. So if you look at Change Order fourteen and eighteen, I'm sorry, just eighteen. Parking requested for gravel impound area fencing behind outbuilding, forty-three thousand, one dollar. Now, if you go to the current police station or other police stations, we currently impound a car very infrequently, and it's behind a stockade fence, parked in the back of the police station with no security. We don't fence off the area, we do park the car behind a little bit of a stockade fence. So this is a proposal on the table of forty-three thousand dollars.
Is that, do you know?
So that, to me, is put the impounded car in that outbuilding and stop messing around with forty-three thousand dollars to put a fence around the back of the outbuilding and smooth it up with gravel.
Is that forty-three thousand what was originally, this is where I got confused on this. Was that the amount that was in the original bid was forty-three thousand? Because there's no number next to final value.
It should never have, it should never have been there, because it goes back over to.
They're pricing that.
It goes back to the second, go to the last page, it talks about fencing, and it talks about gravel. And I'm saying, if we want to spend forty-three thousand dollars to impound a car, that today we impound very few, it's ludicrous.
But Aaron, can I just say?
I could add back into the fencing, but I haven't seen a police department close the fencing that we already approved, so I'm not going back on that. That's eighty thousand dollars of fencing. Ridiculous.
Do we know what they're trying to propose?
Sure, put a fence around the, behind the building.
So I guess in terms of, if this was what the spec was when it went out?
Oh, I, no, it was never on.
I'm trying to figure out if it was on there or not.
I think it's in the wrong space.
Are there additions?
It's in the wrong space.
And what, what was the discussion behind the need for it?
The. Frank wanted to have a place to put various items that may be impounded, such as vehicles and boats and whatnot. And the access would be behind the outbuilding. So the, behind the outbuilding would be physically a fenced-in area where they could put this stuff.
But if I can, Aaron, that fenced-in area they use now isn't where they put the impounded cars, John. They have their, Frank had updated us that when they impound cars there, they bring them to the state police, as all the area towns do.
Listen, they've impounded cars, put them at the police station, I've seen them there. The drug, the drug cars or vehicles that are in a robbery have been stored behind the building in the past. So he may bring some to the state police, bring them there again.
Well, that's the point. The state police will no longer take. All the communities now are no longer going to be able to take.
Put it in the building. Put it in the building. That outbuilding, which is, which is brand new.
Really for, for storage like, for the building, and then, of course, the cruises will be there. I mean, they can put certain items in there, but, you know, they're not.
A forty-three thousand dollar fence and gravel, when you have all that land, is ludicrous. Ludicrous. Now Frank was out, so I couldn't talk to him until tomorrow and say, this is crazy. Just because we have the money, it's not a good idea. If you need to impound it and you need to bring it someplace, either bring it to another. What does Marion do? What does Middleborough do? They don't have the fenced-in areas.
Frank said they bring them to the state police.
So what are they going to do now?
I don't know what Middleborough, I don't know what Middleborough is going to do now.
What does Marion do?
I don't know about Marion.
They don't even have a fenced-in area.
All right, no, I get your point, it's fair, I can talk to Frank.
And I'll talk to Frank and say, this is, this is crazy.
This is something he specifically asked for, so he'll have a better rationale.
Right. Wouldn't you think putting the fence around a building with a gate might cost you five thousand dollars? It's going to cost us forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's actually more than that, because it's forty-three plus the next two, twenty-two and sixteen.
Well, I can't even tell you what it, whether they get added to a part of it.
Grading of number eighteen, so the eighteen is the impound area, so it's creating an impound area.
I think it's only one, I think eighteen R one and eighteen R two are part of the forty-three thousand oh seventy-seven.
I don't, I don't know. The way that I look at it would be that it would be an additional eighty thousand dollars.
Well, if you read it that way, then it's even more ludicrous.
Well, no, what's, I can't really read it, it's blurry.
So it's.
Right, you can take eighteen and you can take eighteen R one and eighteen R two.
And then it's found fencing and gravel and grading only, so are those two options, maybe, is what it is? Is that if you don't want to do the forty-three, you could just do gravel and grading and that's sixteen? Or you could do only fencing and that's twenty-two?
I think that's the case.
All right, it's not all three.
It maxes out at forty-three thousand. And I'll see Frank on it tomorrow. Now, obviously, that's just me and my opinion of impounding cars.
The two out of two of them.
Okay, so we have the updated information on the Route seventy-nine project. So this is a DOT meeting that occurred on January twenty-third to discuss the easement and taking process and next steps, so we have an updated timeline.
I would like to ask, Aaron, I had Lorraine put this together. It's not going to be an easy process for all these easements and takings, and we are going to have another meeting with Mass DOT, and I'd like one of the selectmen to go to the next meeting.
Okay. For what purpose?
To just understand how involved it is. We met with the right-of-way taking specialist at Mass DOT, Jerry Dougherty, and he's working on a very similar project in NADAC. And he's, you know, it's going to take probably seventy-five percent of my time, he said. It's huge, but one of the first hurdles is Middleborough Gas and Electric does not have staff to do the easements and takings. So I've reached out to town council. He works with Katie Klein on the NADAC project, and we're going to have to reach out to Middleborough G and E, because they've never had a utility that didn't have staff to do takings for the polls. So that's one of the first hurdles.
When you got together with Sandy Rick, she said they had a person.
She thought they had staff.
Well, they do have a person. I asked you to get a hold of Jackie Crowley back when we talked about this. She's the chief cook and bottle washer. We didn't do that. We don't have the resources.
Right.
They're the ones that has a person. They move one pole, two pole, three poles at a time. Granted, this is a massive effort. We don't have them. It was always on their plate, so I don't know how it got changed, and they say they don't have anyone. You haven't talked to the general manager.
I've talked to the engineer who does it, and they can do the one pole, just like when we have a pole here. They have the staff for one.
I suggested you get Jackie Crowley and say, listen, this is a massive project, step up to the plate. If we need to pay someone, I don't mind paying them to do it.
Yeah, I guess what I'd say too is, I mean, I don't want to use seventy-five percent of your time.
Right.
Right.
I'd rather use yours.
And, right, and Devaney, the.
Oh, yeah, no, it should never be your time.
No, you, this has a life well beyond your retirement, probably the retirement of the next person.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're asking for a selectman to work with Lorraine to kind of coordinate this.
No, I'd just like to, no, just go to the next meeting with Mass DOT.
Hold on, Nate, John.
Huh? Well, I don't mind going, but you've got to get a hold of Middleborough Gas and Electric, it's their job, not our job. Get Jackie Crowley in a meeting, I'm happy to go there first.
Yeah, I think that makes sense too.
She's the one that has the power and the money.
If, if, right, I mean, how does Middleborough deal with this stuff? I mean, this isn't.
I'm sure they could do a whole road.
Right, but they've redone stuff.
They've done developments, you put in poles and new developments.
They've redone stuff all the time, I mean, they must do this stuff all the time.
So why don't we have, I mean, we have this outline, so if Lorraine works with John, or John goes to the meeting, you know.
Well, I'm not going to the meeting until I go after Middleborough.
But you could work with Lorraine to get the conversation going, so you can meet with whoever you need to meet with to whatever you just said.
The walkthrough, somehow or another, Middleborough had bought into this whole thing. I don't understand why it's all changed now. Was it misinformed always in the beginning?
No, Bill Taylor went to the first meeting and they said, we don't do it. So I call Sandy Rick.
First, what first meeting?
All right, we have a plan, we're going to do it, we don't have to keep talking about it. Next thing is Freetown Street Drainage Analysis.
Okay.
John went to this meeting today.
So I'd ask you, it's a gigantic package, so why don't you just, these colored pages, Aaron's on the right page. So go to figure five, if you will. So figure five, the two-year twenty-four-hour flow here.
Wrong colored paper.
Yeah, so worst case, worst case, there's drainages.
It'll say right here.
Worst case. So worst case is you see the twelve-inch ICP on the top there. Those catch basins are not there now. There's two catch basins, and then there's a circle where they collect the water, they'd have to dig the road up, follow that black line to the intersection of County Street and Freetown Street. And in order to do that work would be probably in excess of three hundred thousand dollars to do that work. And so that's the massive project to do. What we decided to do is also a fifty thousand dollar possible proposal that would mitigate a lot of it. So what we agreed to do at the meeting was to do some test borings on both sides of Freetown Street. This becomes a nightmare if it's ledge. And if you know the area and you are on this side of Freetown Street, that's all of, falls down one forty, that's all ledge, you can see where they dug it up. If that is ledge, this is probably a no-go. It would be digging, what I call blasting or whatever, in order to sink the pipes with the right pitch in order to get the water down there. So there are other alternatives. So, but before we abandon this, we're going to do some test borings, so we know what we're getting into. As a minimum, we said, go to the Department of Transportation, District Five, show them the plans that we've invested a lot of money in doing, and say that we have an approximate three hundred thousand dollar project in front of us. We'd like you to pay a substantial amount of that, and see what they have to say. So Ryan Trehan and an associate possibly, but. So Ryan Trehan and, and associate possibly, but Ryan is the lead person on it. Along with Franklin, would go to the Department of Transportation, show them these plans, these alternatives. And say to correct Freetown Street as a three hundred thousand dollar, not how much will you step up to do. Now, the other side of it is a fifty thousand dollar solution which would solve some of it by putting a crown on the road, doing Cape Cod berms on either side.
Yep.
At the intersection of, of Freetown and County. This water that's currently here, pockets over here, we've dug that out, cleaned the brush. We minimally would up the size of the drainages through the last fifty years. They're all filled in. So the water probably isn't flowing even through the twelve-inch drain. So we would dig that up along with the state approval. Put in two twelve-inch ones or one twenty-four inch one. And that's somewhere in the fifty to hundred thousand dollar range. So our goal is to try to get the state to step up and, and see it. Now, we have to stop them from tiring. They've already tired all the way to the rental place, the storage place. And we're saying, don't do any more yet.
Yeah.
And you see that they've done a good job on County Street. So this is a massive project, but it is, it is.
It sounds like it was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting. Certainly, certainly environmental partners has the right people and they know what they're doing. And so they deal with the Department of Transportation all the time. So.
Okay.
That's what they're gonna do.
So the last thing is just to get an update from Regional FinCom.
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about capital projects, um, you know, which will put Nate together with the schools, as we said, to talk about some of those capital projects. Cause a lot of them were really just somewhat maintenance related and I suggested they meet with Bob Sousa, but of course Bob, I guess is leaving and going to Old Colony. So, yeah, yeah, that was announced. Um, so it will be whoever is in that position. Um, so Old Colony, I'm sure will be very happy to have him. He's been, you know, instrumental in a lot of what's been happening in town and the schools, so, um, that's one thing. You know, one of the other things that came up was kind of an interesting conversation. Just that they want to try to have one person by which they want communication directed through the town, um, as a liaison to them, I think through the Regional FinCom meeting and if I always go to the meetings and say that I don't speak to the board. That's not what I'm there for. So, you know, I think if they're getting information from one member of the board, they've taken it as a directive of something they need to do, which again is not coming from the board. So I don't know if it's just clarification or, you know, again, I'm, I'm kind of the liaison to the schools. I don't mind working with them on any correspondence that we have, but two of the things they came up with, um, you know, John, when you were talking about the, the graze dam. Uh, graze dam, wow, I just combined two things that I don't like. The, the graze debt and the dam, that, those issues.
Damn, it's just another dam.
That's funny, um, but with the, the graze debt, which, you know, we'd already kind of, at least I had believed that we had come to a resolution on that a couple of years ago, but that was brought back up. And then the insurance on the tanks that, for the underground storage tanks. So there were two things that kinda came out of nowhere that I really didn't even understand why they were bringing up at that meeting other than it was a forum by which they felt like they could have a conversation, probably to come back here, so we can have a conversation with them. I think, you know, the, it's probably, you know, if correspondence goes through Rita or is copied with Rita, might be the solution just so that everybody knows kinda what's happening with the schools. I, I, I don't know what you, your thoughts are on it.
Let me say, on the debt service, I asked them one simple question. And I've asked that before. And they objected to me asking the question because they said I should have asked you the question first, so I'll ask you the question.
Yeah, which you can't do.
I'll ask you the question first. Is that the agreement in my mind is based on the number of Freetown, the graze debt. It's based on the number of students that are sent to graze from the Freetown school system. They had the fifth grade there. When the fourth grade went there, my simple question is, the year before the fourth grade went there, what were they paying on the debt? Because once the fourth grade went, they should be paying in excess, in excess of fifty thousand dollars. Additional debt once they decided to send the fourth grade there. So my question to you is, the year before they sent them, what were they paying for the debt for the graze school? And what did they pay, say, the next two years? Simple question.
Well, so the, the real question though is, are we overpaying now? That's really what you're getting at, right? Or are we going back to what happened back in two thousand and seven?
Well, we're overpaying now.
Right, that's, that's the real question.
Make that a simple question, but the only way to know that, to, to satisfy me is, what were they paying prior to grade four moving?
Well, and, I mean, I spent a lot of time on that over the summer of whatever year that was, two thousand and.
Three years, I think you said three years.
Something, two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen. So there's the report that I put together that was sent to them too, that we were all kind of informed of and the process that went into it. I don't wanna recreate that, but we have the report. So I'm happy to just kinda send that around so that everyone can see and then we can discuss it. I just don't remember.
The bank, who was the bank?
It's Unibank, but their, their calculation is not.
The, the simple question is, they were allowed approximately a hundred students. They doubled it. So did their debt go up? Did, did, did debt payment go up? Ours would have gone down. That's a simple question.
I think that was, if I'm, I don't wanna necessarily speak without having it in front of me, but from what I remember was that when they changed and then, there was a they were not, they were not required to pay for the first hundred and seven students.
I get that.
In terms of, and it wasn't a per pupil. The thing is, and I remember getting hung up on this, that the calculation was done by Unibank as a per pupil, but when you look at the agreement, it was done based upon a proportionate ratio. But there was something funny about the numerator and the denominator where we had a conversation because it would change it dramatically if it was one-third that was not being paid or it actually was three-quarters. And I think it was three-quarters that Lakeville ended up with because you still counted the Lakeville students over the entirety of, of the student pop, or no, we excluded them. I, I have to look at the calculation.
If you have that, I'm happy to look at that with you because I may have a different version.
Yeah, I'll send.
To.
It's amazing you recall that much. That was great.
Yeah, but we.
Right, right, but I'm, I'm asking a simple question. From before the grade four, what was the amount? And afterwards, that should be a single sheet that someone should give us.
Yeah, I can't answer that based upon the information that I went through, but that was part of the process by which we got to are we paying the appropriate amount of debt service right now? And I have that calculation and I will have that sent so that we can look at it again. Now, I, I don't remember, again, every step I took along the way to get there, but there was a memo of the auditors. They said that Lakeville was underpaying. And that's when I went and said, you're absolutely wrong, redid all the calculations.
We paid the whole thing.
Cause we went to the auditors and we said, look, we agreed that the school committee would get their auditors to go through and that their auditors would calculate this. And everyone said, okay, let's let the auditors do it. The auditors went in and they screwed the whole thing up, in my opinion, because they said then Freetown was under, or overcharged and that Lakeville owed Freetown. And I said, you're absolutely wrong. And I went through and I remember they were using pieces of paper that came from the school district that did not actually get verified to the cash that was paid, cause it was it, the whole thing was totally wrong. And I had tick marks and I have a whole work paper that was all set up on it.
Hopefully it's not twenty pages.
It's not. It's a spreadsheet that has about three tabs and it has multiple scenarios for three years in a row and I'll send it to you.
It only has the graze debt.
I'm not gonna sleep tonight, cause I'm gonna start thinking about it again. But it's already been done and we agreed to it and we had a memo and then I made the auditors write a letter that said you're right.
I'm not gonna ask Ashley Lopes questions.
No.
You're wrong.
No, and that's the thing that I wanna just, you know, have that, I, I think that they need to, to have that conversation.
They need to relax. I've asked them one question in a year and they objected. You should watch the school committee meeting. Big deal.
No, I mean, I think that, you know, it's just trying to foster the communications that we have between school and, and town.
I've asked the same question before. Send me the worksheets, we'll see what it is.
Okay.
The, the view in the meeting.
Just under new business that I know.
Rick, Rick had, uh, no capital request this year, which was good. The energy grants, we, we, we keep talking circles around that. They're spending money doing things that they can get free grants for. As our financial representative, I'd like you to get them to stop that and get on board with this. For five years, we've been trying to get them to do that.
Typically, when I go to these meetings, a lot of what I do is I just take in information. I can't make any decisions when I'm there as a rep, I, although I represent the board, I can't speak for the board. So when they're presenting capital plans, you know.
You can speak for the board.
It's, but you know, getting that information and, and I asked them about, you know, green communities and all of that. And that's why I said, I would like for them to talk to Nate, cause I wanted them to get their facilities people together with Nate. Because if they have capital improvements that are at the schools, I wanna make sure that that makes sense from that perspective, so.
We absolutely agree with that. Absolutely agree with that. But our job is to try to watch what they spend. They gotta get these energy grants and stop. They're replacing things for thousands of dollars they don't need to do. There's grants for all, everything, changing LEDs and, and parking lots, changing lights in buildings, forgetting the energy grant. They can get those grants. But we can get the energy grants and you certainly can speak for them. The, so they, they changed their mind on the AES submission to the state once again when they brought that to the school committee. And I do not wanna support that.
No, I don't.
It, it isn't the twelve million dollars. We, we, we've gone around this merry-go-round before. And they had a good idea at the Regional School Finance Committee to go after window grants that, as, as a reason for, was different, but it doesn't meet the energy grants.
Well, that's fine. They'll have to come in front of us and it'll be on a future agenda where they'll sit in front of us and they'll try to explain why they want to go out to the MSBA and apply again under the program, which I think is due by April or something, that they want to apply the school for a grant. And we'll get to sit here and we'll get to have that conversation with them to say, and I, I, you know, they said that they'd be bringing it back up at the school committee meeting, but we needed to talk about it too. But I, I think if they've already decided that they want to move forward with it, well, they have to come to us and now we have the conversation.
I agree with that. I wanted to tell you they voted to, to bring that forward. The, uh, number of students that no one seemed to know, how many additional students could go to AES? We, we moved three hundred students kind of out of the school. They had peaked out at seven fifty. I think that's four fifty now. Rick had said, well, I think you could add a hundred. Maybe you could add a hundred, maybe you could add three hundred more. So you certainly don't have a space problem there. The, the fire system, I asked Mike O'Brien, which I think you asked Mike O'Brien. Did you suggest to them they need to change all this?
Yeah.
Stuff. He said, no.
Exactly.
So you put things on capital that aren't under the purview of anyone else. Now, it isn't under our purview. It's a regional school system. But the capital, uh, we certainly want those. And we should get them sent to the selectmen and certainly the, the.
Yeah, I mean, we can get.
The building, the building.
Yeah, so we can get the capital plan sent to us. I mean, the big, the big thing is, there's nothing that's going to be requested on their budget this year for the capital plan anyways.
I get that. I get that.
I mean, we can get it, but it's kinda not, in my opinion, worth the conversation, other than I see that some of these things, I want them to work with Nate. I want them to work with Mike.
I wanna address the things that they may wanna do next year. If, if there's a grant, I wanna put those on.
That's what we asked Nate to do earlier and what we're writing a letter to the school committee, so that we can get that going. So that they know they should be working with Nate on green communities.
Right. And, and the oil tank continually comes up. And it isn't John Podley saying, don't replace the tank. It's saying that the inspectors say that it has a fifteen-year useful life. We're relying upon those inspections for that. So you wouldn't dig up a tank that had fifteen-year useful life.
Yeah, I, I didn't take any, anything from that conversation, other than if Ashley could look at the lease with Asawamset and determine if that was their responsibility, if that's what they were. That's what I thought, because when I looked at, and I looked at the lease and I pulled it up during that meeting.
Insurance aspect. The insurance aspect, when, when we wrote the policy for fills, for overflows, we wrote that policy. We, we met as a group of selectmen back when we added that to our policy. And then the insurance company looked at things, gave us a five thousand dollar charge. We said, okay, let's spend it. At no point in time did we ever, that I ever envisioned, we were gonna give a bill to the school. We certainly shouldn't give them a bill this year. We did that. If we sent, we're, we're not here to spend their money without advising them that at first. We should eat that two thousand dollar premium in my mind. They're inspecting this tank at their cost.
I mean, did.
So I, I would take that insurance bill and pay it.
Well.
The selectmen decided to do that policy.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is really, did the conversation or is the conversation happening between we have a lease in place with the schools? The terms of the lease are such that insurance is required. Is this, you know, any required insurances? Or is it an optional insurance that's not covered under the lease? I don't really care. It's fifteen hundred bucks, but I think that determination could be made between the town administrator and the superintendent.
I, I don't think we should send them a bill.
And the business manager, yeah.
I don't think we should send them a bill, even if the lease allows for it. We were the ones that decided to write that policy. If we wanted them to pay it, we should've said, hey, we're writing the policy. You interested in, in paying for it?
The issue, no, the issue would be it's our property and it's our asset. And so if we're preserving our asset and we're putting insurance on it, I just, I, I just wanna make sure the communication is there. I don't really wanna talk about this because honestly, I just think that it's, it's not.
It's not worth the effort. Throw the bill, pay the bill, don't give it to them.
That we don't charge back the school, that's fine.
We voted to write the insurance.
I wanna just make sure that the lease, and if it's in the lease, that they should pay it.
Every year and said, you know, I've got the bill.
Did they pay it last year?
Well, no, because I didn't realize what proportion of it was, of the five thousand, eighteen hundred is the, thirty-two percent of the.
That policy in the end of the day was a mistake. We've already spent thirty-two thousand dollars on a five thousand dollar policy. Franklin did all those oil changes at his place because of that policy. Never should've written the policy. If I could go back and take it and throw it away, I would. We thought it was an easy five thousand dollar fix. All those improvements that he did, improvements, all those things he did, those holding tanks and things that he hasn't yet done, which were so imperative to do, were done based on that insurance policy.
Alright, do we have any other business?
Yeah, um, so one other piece, um, just related to, I know that you're not running again.
I'm not?
Uh, in April. I guess there's still time, if you wanna take out papers. So with regard to a transition of the chairmanship, um, as I'm up next and typically is how it goes. I don't know if we wanna talk about when that should be effective, before we have a changeover in the board. Just so that we have someone to be able to put the agenda together and work, you know, on that, so that we have a smooth transition, so.
I, I don't care if you do it now or you do it April. That's up to.
Okay.
Traditionally, we wait till April first.
Yeah.
But I don't care.
If we do it in March.
If you wanna be the chairman and Aaron doesn't care, that's fine. But if we wanna wait till April first, I'm fine with that too.
And I actually don't mind that because it would take some stuff off my plate personally.
I, I don't.
Yeah, so I don't care when we do it, but if you wanna just work with Rita to put the reorg on.
Yeah, we'll add it to an agenda.
Okay.
Do it. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Alright. When are we gonna be scheduling? Capital meetings, budget meetings?
Yeah, we should talk about that. You wanna talk about it now?
Nibble away at it.
Yeah, exactly, cause I wanna start it now, um, although I, I am meeting with, with Rita tomorrow and a couple of things. Um, so that maybe we can start figuring out what scheduling works, but let me take a look now. Because we have all the capital, I, I'd like to start with capital ideally. And then that way we can, maybe we have, could be one meeting, just, or maybe it's two meetings.
Well, the capital is, that, that says what we've got left over. If the budgets frighten you, then you don't have any money left for capital.
Yeah, and I guess that's a good point. And maybe if we look at the, well, if, as long as we have the overall budget summary, but we're not meeting with the department heads, but then the ones who want capital, then we, we can kinda see where all the requests fill in now.
I, I don't mind, I, I don't mind doing the capital, but. I, I don't mind do, I, I don't mind doing the capital, but I would only buy X.
Yeah.
If in fact, we had money available.
Right, because the thing is, well, what I think the capital meetings at least would be is to get the information exactly on what it is. But after we've filled in what will work in the budget summary, so you have all the budget summaries. So that's already updated, so at least the first iteration. This is the, the magical request list of everything everybody wants. So I think that's the point now where if we look at both of them and then we start determining when we're going to meet with the department heads. Do you think, would you want to look at the budget summary together to, to game plan that? Maybe possibly before we meet with people on the 5th? Does that work for like a half an hour, 40 minutes just to...
The 5th of February?
February? Yeah, because if we're already meeting February 5th?
We have that down.
It's at 10:30?
Yeah.
You know, maybe if we meet at 10 instead?
No, it's 10 on this.
I thought it was 10.
Oh, well, okay, good.
Well, it was 10, but Rita put, it was 10:30, but Rita put it as 10.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we discussed 10:30. But, so you want to just do 10?
Yeah, if we do 10, because then maybe the first half an hour is, let's look at the budget summary. Let's look at all the capital requests. Again, it's more like a game plan that we could have, so then we can set it up. So at least we've got it on the calendar and then we can start to say, hey, look, these are going to be our major issues in the budget and where we need to start focusing those next couple of meetings on. Does that work?
Yeah, yeah.
So 10 on the 5th?
Yeah.
And we, we start off, well, we can talk about them both. It doesn't make any difference.
Because, yeah, because I think we'll, we'll look at the big picture first and then game plan. And then we'll figure out the meetings and the meeting schedules so that we...
Right, right.
Game plan it.
Where?
The 5th, on the 5th, it's going to be at the police station.
At 10:00 AM?
Oh, the police station?
Yeah.
But if we're going to do, we're going to do the open session of budgets prior to? Because if, if they set up, a meeting may not be a long meeting. I mean, the budgets, we can go on for as long as we want.
Well, I think it's going, I want to keep the budget to high level. How are we going to plan what we need? Yeah, I think a half an hour is plenty if we set it up for a budget, an overall budget discussion and what we want to do and just set up how we want to approach it. Because once we see it all, it's not going to be about asking questions or specifics per se unless we look at it and go, oh, boy, we have a $600,000 problem right now. These are the issues we have that are sitting in here. And I know that the numbers, the preliminary numbers came out from, I haven't seen the school budget. That's the thing, is the school budget...
That's coming out on the 6th, you said?
I believe so. So I wish they would give us a top line number or an assessment sheet, but I don't think they will beforehand. Yeah. I mean, we, I think we all built in a similar number anyways.
I guess the simple question is, do they want to hire any? It's, it's the same as us. Eighty-five percent of the budget is people.
Well, the big question is, what is that number increase on? So if you looked at the changeover and the required minimum contribution between Freetown and Lakeville, this year, Lakeville is going to take the brunt of that, so the total allocation will shift a little. But we have some savings, I think, coming in through Bristol Aggie that at least that's going to be a, a chunk of savings. I tried to look at Old Colony, their, their required minimum contribution went up like another, I think, it was 100 maybe over what last year's was too. So we certainly, and I know in my original, you know, basic calculation of the budget, I put in $700,000 as an increase overall for education, including all of those others. Transportation has been reduced from the chapter 70, or the 71 funds and the reimbursement, but that was never factored into the last year's because the difference was going into E and D is what the expected E and D is. So, you know, that's not such a big shock to us because we never got the benefit of that from last year. So, you know, I think we're...
Right. Ashley had just got the numbers from the state. Last Wednesday, they had their school committee meeting. She had just got it an hour before the school committee meeting.
Yeah, it came out like the 20th.
So the reimbursements go up slightly.
Not much, yeah.
The reimbursements don't really change.
No, but what's going to be key is, they had said previously, and this was last year, where their, their first thought was, school choice revenue wasn't going to be part of the budget. And they changed that because that wasn't going to fly and they also have to use it within 18 months. The second piece is, last year in the budget, we also included that $125,000 into the school budget, which was designed specifically as an increase in both towns so that we could fund E and D. So we know that that should be off the table as well. So I think we're, we're hopefully going to be in a good spot, but I'd love to see that first assessment sheet because I want to see their top line budget number, what they have versus, yeah, circuit breaker. Exactly.
I mean, they, they had some of those discussions at the school committee.
Yeah.
But it really is, it, it's no different. You can take all that stuff and a little bit added, a little bit deleted. It simply says, what are your steps, levels and raises? All the other stuff is beyond our control, if you will.
Right, unless they want to do any other new initiatives that are coming through.
Right. They did those at Assawamset last year after the fact, saying they were going to save money.
Adding paraprofessionals?
Adding paraprofessionals and a teacher on the sped side. What they would have sent out of district, they'd be able to keep there. So there should be savings in theory, but you're still down to the steps, levels and raises. So it's just a contractual.
Yeah, and I figured that that increase is probably going to be $800,000, is my guess. And maybe health insurance on top of that being, you know, maybe it's 900. And that's going to be the base increase that they have on their budget. The states come to the table to say, we'll give you another $75,000. So we know already from the beginning, we're looking at it saying, well, Freetown and Lakeville are probably going to have to come to the table with another 800, you know, between the two of them. The split for us is a little bit worse this year, so it might be 500, 300. But if we can take off that 125...
Why would it be worse this year?
Because the required local contribution went up in Lakeville and down in Freetown. Well, actually, it didn't go down. It went up more in Lakeville than it did proportionately in Freetown. However, I didn't look at the...
But we've already exceeded that number too.
Yeah, we're already over it anyway. So what happens is it's just, here's the pool, but the, the base here just shifts a little bit. So then what's left here? And I, I didn't look exactly, I was looking at it on my phone. So I just didn't look at what the total population is and the change in that because typically now we have, it, the percentage and the shift on the rest has been coming a little bit more in favor, like half a percentage.
Our building permits far exceeded theirs.
For, yeah, for new growth.
For, for, right, for new growth.
Yeah, exactly.
Not for students necessarily.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I mean, just so that we can have an overview.
No, that was good.
We can keep going on.
That was a good, I, I'm always amazed at your ability to recall facts. I mean, that was, wasn't that impressive? No, sincerely, it was. That was totally awesome. Like, that was the whole recap of last year's budget with, with the school. Like, that's exactly what it was. It was awesome.
So your 2.5% increase is 600,000, so...
On their numbers.
Well, on our revenue side, 600,000, with overgrowth.
All right, but the party's over.
Yep.